Good evening, everyone. It is now four thirty PM and we are the City of Carmel by the Sea City Council. Today is March third, two thousand twenty-five, and I will call this special meeting to order. Nova, could we get the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Booter?
Here.
Mayor Protem Delphs?
Here.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We will now open public comment. This is your opportunity to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on today's agenda. Please raise your hand in the chambers and on Zoom if you'd like to speak so we can get an idea of the total number of people who would like to make a comment at this time. So we've got two. We have two people in the... Who wants to make a public comment one more time? Just hold on, we're not quite ready. We're not ready. Okay. All right, so we have about four in the audience. All right, good. So each speaker is limited to three minutes. While stating your name is not required, it helps us to identify speakers in the meeting minutes. Please form a line at the podium if you're going to speak. Under the Brown Act, public comments on non-agenda items must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. Comments on agenda items will be heard after each item is introduced and must pertain to that specific item. Speakers attending the meeting remotely who failed to comply with the Brown Act will be muted. All right, so here's our first speaker.
Yeah, hey, good evening. I will say who I am. You know, it's pretty interesting, you know, five years later almost, I went on a Monday to a City of Santa Cruz council meeting to pick up the paperwork, see what was going on. Next day on Tuesday, they had changed the meeting and they had closed it down. It was the first time I, it's the only time I've actually seen the current, well, the previous police chief, Andy Mills, behaved like a panicked child. I mean, I've been in a lot of observation of Andy Mills, but that just really wasn't a strong point. So what really started happening down there? I know the City of Santa Cruz, they shut down their meetings to the public for two years. It was crazy. I would try to do Zoom, but I really kind of got bored with the things that were going on. So my name is James Julian Whitman. I probably am the most politically outspoken individual in Santa Cruz County, and I feel really bad about that because I'm having so much fun, I feel selfish. Now, I'm kind of here to support change. Things that have happened have already happened, and there's been a couple, several things that have happened in this community that got really some national spotlight as far as people enforcing things, just following orders that really didn't make a lot of sense. Now, I wasn't here, but I can talk about the comedy of being in Santa Cruz, and I decided to test the water, so to speak, and I did quite a few walks on the beach, you know, and I would usually be talked to. I think one of the funnier times was walking from the mouth of the San Lorenzo through the boardwalk. The only human being in the water, I was naked except for a black swimsuit, and I'd already been reprimanded that I couldn't just exercise and dance walk in the water, I had to have some instrument with me, so I had a boogie board that was unknown to me, blue and yellow, and I witnessed a bunch of people having fun with their ATVs on the beach. And after I'd been in the water for about forty-five minutes and got out, it was a nice day, you know, it was early April, but I was cold. I decided to walk by, walk back, and I just kind of got surrounded by a bunch of vehicles and ATVs asking me what the duck I was doing. And I'm like, really? I've seen you guys going back and forth across the beach the past forty-five minutes. You didn't see me, I was the only one in the water. What's, one of the many things about law enforcement is when you call them on doing something that's kind of crap, usually they'll just kind of realize that they've done that. And I, I'm here to support, what are the remedies for change today? Because what's happened before has already happened, and I'm sure I could be quite mean. I really like this room. The redwood is amazing. I wasn't planning on speaking first, but I'll probably speak later and I'll probably speak tomorrow, so, oh, I'm done. How good is that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilpeople, Gary Richard Arnold. This is a quote from the governor of Colorado regarding regional agencies like the COG you belong in. Have you chosen who's going to represent the COG? Or have you ever educated any of the people out here? Do you ever have anybody report when you come back from an Ambag meeting? Anyway, he, the governor says this regional authority constitutes a most violent attack on the American constitutional way of life that has ever been made, and it will grow if unchecked, it will determine the bitterest issue which the American people have encountered since slavery. There exists in this country today a plan to commence a remodeling of the lives of American free men on the basis so dictatorial, so monarchistic, so bureaucratic, that it's very exposition approves its hostility to the American form of government. There is working under the Advisory Committee of Intergovernmental Relations, which you are controlled by and which is funded by the World Bank and is under the United Nations, which corrupts, you're swearing your allegiance to the United States. It says, "This sophisticated world cell system of subversion is cancerous. The Advisory Committee on International Relations is a council on foreign relations underground, quietly working while America sleeps. They have actually installed a parallel system of government similar to the one eventually seized under the power of Adolf Hitler." There's more of this information, and it should be in a packet that we gave it to you. It is very dangerous. We ask that you become totally transparent with the meetings at Ambag, and I would encourage your teachers to have the, their schools and high school people and other people to attend what's going on there. It is a hidden form of government, and it is very destructive, as you will read.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ken Spilfugel.
Yes.
I hope your tour was good.
Speak up, Ken.
I'd like to thank Brandon for giving us the opportunity as a resident, as a resident for allowing us to talk to him about restaurants, Pepe and I, and we have an opportunity coming up next week. We have, we have, I'm not necessarily saying myself, but we have quite a few intelligent human beings that live in our town that are, that are available to participate in, in local government and exercise their brilliance that they've had all their lifetime. And I think that opportunity is great, is, it's free, and we're all available to be helpful. And I want to thank for those of you that will understand that it's really important to us to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Do we have any other speakers in the chamber?
Can we talk about what's going to be discussed in close session now, or is that later?
That would be later.
Would be later?
Just, just before we, we go into close session, thank you for that, for the question. Anybody else in the chamber? Any hands up?
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the council or the public may request any of the consent items to be considered individually for discussion or public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. Would anyone in the public like to pull any items from the consent for discussion or Yes, Ashley?
Mayor, council, I don't really want to pull anything, I just want to make a note about item five, that's Culinary Week. I had a last minute change that came in Wednesday night, and I think it made it to the electronic packets, and that's the switch of the two, the Wednesday event as proposed in the staff report to Tuesday. So some of you may see, have seen the Wednesday version, but it's Tuesday, the resolution has been updated to reflect that, and Nova is aware as well, but it might, if you have a print packet, it might have said Wednesday still.
Otherwise, no changes.
Otherwise, no changes at all, just the date switch from Wednesday to Tuesday.
And you view, view that as not substantial and permanent?
No, it was more of a convenience for the restaurants participating to make the move from Wednesday to Tuesday.
Thank you for updating us on that. All right. Anyone on the council want to pull an item? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adopt all of the consent agenda items, number one through number six?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion from any council members? Nova, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delphs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to the Orders of Business section of the agenda. Orders of Business are agenda items that require city council discussion, debate, direction to staff, and/or action. The first one is receive presentation from the Carmel Area Wastewater District on the Scenic Road Pipeline Replacement Project and authorize issuance of an encroachment permit with special conditions of approval. Chip, would you like to introduce the staff member who's going to give a report on this item?
I think Javier is going to introduce the, the gentleman from COD, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Javier?
Good evening, council mayor. So, so from time to time, I just wanted to give a quick overview of this. From time to time, we have significant projects that happen within the city that have various impacts to either traffic flows or pedestrian access and all that, we like to bring those encroachment permits to council for you guys to really ask any questions of the project or have input as far as the project moving forward. This particular project is for sewer repairs along Scenic Road. The stretch is from Ocean Avenue, the stretch that impacts the city is from Ocean Avenue all the way to Santa Lucia. It's important to know that the construction will be after Labor Day, so it's not during the peak summer months. And also, this item's already been, it's gone to the Planning Commission, and they approved the, the initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, as well as a coastal development permit for this project. And I'll introduce Patrick Traynor, who's a representative from COD, and he'll be going through some slides to give you a little bit more detail on the project.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So this is a sewer project, as we've, as Javier noted, and Carmel Area Wastewater District has, was established in nineteen oh eight, so we go way back with the City of Carmel, and the development of the city as it is now is very much afforded by the sewers that were installed in the early days of the city. This picture is from the late nineteen thirties, and this is the construction of the Treatment Plant Site, which is our current Treatment Plant Site, and this is the era of the sewers that are currently in the streets that we're going to be replacing. Most of these buildings are gone now, but that one on the left is still there, and there's a plaque on it that says Franklin D Roosevelt Administration, and that's our lunchroom. So this is what the pipes look like that we're going to be rehabilitating. They're made of clay, so on the left there, that's one of our actual pipes in our system. We put cameras down to inspect the sewers, and as you can see, clay pipe is prone to cracking and breaking, like shown in the picture, and what happens when, when that occurs is that roots will grow into the pipe because the plants like the water, and it can cause sewer overflows. It can also cause a sinkhole in that location, so that's what we're trying to do with this project is avoid sinkholes and sewer spills. This is what the, the new modern pipe looks like that will be installed in place of the old pipe. This is like the Chat GPT of sewer pipes. It's virtually indestructible. You can hit it with a sledgehammer and it'll just, the hammer will just bounce right off of it. It's also pretty nifty because it can, it's flexible, so you can pull it in to, and through the existing pipe and sit you to limit the amount of trenching during the installation that's called, in this situation, it's called pipe bursting, and that's how much of this project is going to be installed. This is a overview map of the project area. We're focused on look sewer pipes near water bodies, and that's because of the Clean Water Act, we have to prioritize sewer spills that might get into natural water bodies. So we have Scenic Road along the beach, that's in the city area, and then the, the lines in the south are in the county jurisdiction, and those are around the lagoon, and that pipe on the left is, is one of our main trunk lines into the Treatment Plant, so it's one of the bigger lines as you get closer to the Treatment Plant. Some frequently asked questions, will this impact access to the beach or the pedestrian trail? And so the answer is no, as part of the SEQA mitigated negative declaration, we had to make sure we weren't going to negatively impact coastal access, and so the, that is primarily pedestrian access, so the trail that's shown in that picture is not going to be affected by the construction, so people are, during the whole project, are going to be able to walk up and down the trail, will be able to walk across Scenic Road to get to the beach, so there won't be any impacts to coastal access. The bulk of the work will be scheduled for the quote unquote offseason, there's not much of an offseason, but that's targeted around January and February timeframe where there's less people enjoying the beaches. How will the road be impacted? So there will be impacts to the actual street car traffic, so we have to close the road to traffic because there's, the pipes are in the road, but it's going to be kind of block at a time, so it's not like the whole entire area is going to be closed at once, it's from one manhole to another manhole is kind of the work areas as they go along. The nice thing is at the end of the workday, the, the contractor leaves, they button everything up, and the road gets returned back to normal, so we go back to the nice quiet streets after the working period, and on the weekends, the road will be open. People that live in the area that's going to be impacted, they'll, they'll be able to get to their driveways even if there's construction right in front of their house, because we're not going to stop people from being able to come in and out of their driveways. Parking's going to be impacted at night, you can't, won't be able to park in an active construction area because if someone leaves their car there and the contractor gets there the next day, it'll be in the way. And then to put a cherry on top, we're going to fully resurface the streets, all the streets that we work in at the, at the end of the project, so that benefits the city. Another important frequently asked question is, will service, emergency services be impacted? No, we're going to be in contact with all the emergency, the ambulance and fire and police, keep them informed, and then if there's ever an emergency, the contractor gets out of the way and lets the, those people do their job. This question comes up a lot, actually, will my sewer service be impacted? And again, the answer is essentially no, we're not shutting off people's sewers to be able to do this work. There is a short period of eight hours where we're making the final connection between the block of homes and the new pipe, and we'll ask people not to use their facilities, but we're not going to stop them if they need to. So it's basically continuous service. Last slide is, how can I stay informed? COD is doing a lot of its own public outreach to the residents in the area, also met with a lot of community groups, and we have another, we're going to be scheduling another meeting, likely at the Carmel Foundation, for the local community to come ask questions during construction. We're going to have a hotline posted so people can call us, you know, complain or whatever, let us know what's going on, and so hopefully everybody knows who we are, and that's my presentation. Questions?
I've got a couple. Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick questions for you. What about bicycle traffic? Can that still occur?
So if it's on the road, probably not. If it's going to go on the paved street through the construction area, we wouldn't want, we would stop a bike from coming through because we don't want them to fall into a hole.
Okay. And what about deliveries like FedEx, UPS, that sort of thing?
So, good question. I'm thinking, most people don't get deliveries from UPS in the city because of the P O boxes?
No, we do.
Oh, okay. So how long, is that everywhere in the city?
Yeah, and it's daytime deliveries.
Okay, and they just go by the north, you know, re-north of?
Right.
Okay, so we'll have to, we'll have to make sure we don't impact that.
Okay, super. And then my last question, just to confirm, so you said it's going to be done a block at a time, just a section like that at a time?
Yeah, essentially, but unfortunately, Scenic Road has that long section where it's almost like four blocks smooshed together.
Right.
So even if we're just on partial of that block, we have to close the whole, that whole block.
Okay, thank you.
So really, you're going to close the entire Scenic Road?
Yeah, well, from eighth to thirteenth, yeah, that, that, that's the longest section that's going to be impacted for an extended period, yes. Hunt?
I mean, that, that was my question, was, you know, kind of paint a picture for me of what this looks like out there. I guess, what side of the street is the sewer pipe on? And is there any possible way of doing this where you could still allow a car to eke by? Because, you know, a big part of our economy is the beach, and, you know, unfortunately, as you highlighted, if you block off from, you know, somewhere around eighth, you know, you're effectively blocking off all of, all of Scenic, and this is going to be a, you know, I think it looked like a nine month project or something along those lines. So is, is there any potential, possible way of allowing a car to sneak by while doing this?
So the sewer kind of moves what side of the street it's on, it kind of goes on both, it curves around, so sometimes it's on the left side, sometimes it's in the middle, sometimes it's on the right. Sometimes it is possible to get cars around, and if it makes sense that, you know, it's easier to keep the street open to let people, you know, while the construction's happening, then, then that would, that would occur, it's like the worst case scenario to have to close the street. So the nine months thing doesn't really, doesn't apply to, to that from eighth to thirteenth. I think we were targeting like twenty days from eighth to thirteenth. And, and so, but the whole project is nine months because it's two miles, but just that one, like, I don't know, quarter mile section, that would be twenty days during the offseason. And is that all of your questions? I think there might have been one that I'm missing. Just is, I mean, other streets, like, if, if it is not going to be right in the middle of the street, we wouldn't close the whole street. We're only going to close the whole street if we have, if we absolutely have to for safety and to be able to do the work, which in a lot of cases, that's the only way to do it. So there, there wasn't any way to just completely avoid closing streets to do the work.
So basically, you're, you're, you know, you're basically saying that that stretch, twenty days for, for that stretch is what's?
Yeah, twenty working days.
Got it.
And not, no impact on the weekends, and in the evenings, it would be open as usual, and so we would have signs, you know, telling people detour, road closed, and people would have to park in, on a different street.
Hey, Patrick, thank you. I asked you this question when you came before the Planning Commission, when I was there. Will you be doing every sewer on every road in the City of Carmel over some period of time, and what, what period of time is that?
Yeah, we, we have a fifteen year plan of doing a lot of this, so for quite a while, hopefully you'll be, you know, seeing us a lot. We're anticipating maybe two to four, like, let's say, three miles a year, and we have, our total system's eighty miles, so, you know, maybe we'll do like half of our, less than half of our system in the next fifteen years, and that, that'll get us back to a good place, because like I showed at the beginning, like, this is stuff that was built seventy-five, eighty years ago, and we just go through these big cycles, and we're in one of those cycles now. We do this fifteen year sewer replacement work, and then we'll be good for another eighty years, or maybe a hundred, because these new pipes are different than the old pipes.
Oh, I'm glad you're doing it. You're a well-run organization, you've, you know, planned well, you've got the money to do what you need to do, and I appreciate that. And behind, but what's behind the question is, as we try to figure out which roads we want to repave with our own capital improvement, it would seem to be a really good idea to have a, not just a six month horizon conversation, but a six to twelve year horizon conversation to understand, you know, what your priorities are so that maybe we don't pave a street that you might be repaving.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, and we'll definitely work with city staff on that. We usually know like at least two years in advance what we're, what we're going to be doing two years from now.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So what percentage of our sewer pipes are in the condition of Scenic Road in the entire city?
I don't know that off the top of my head. And it's kind of, it's all issues kind of all over the place, it's, it's hard, it's hard, it's kind of like, you know, a shotgun blast of issues all around the eighty miles worth of sewer, so it's, it's a difficult problem to solve because we can't just focus on, you know, just one particular area that's bad because there's, you know, defects all over the place that we have to manage.
It was built over different time periods?
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff that, you know, in the sixties, seventies, eighties, every decade, there was new developments going on and different defects that have come up, and we do, we do, you'll see our crews out doing spot repairs, we do a lot of spot repairs too, to try and, the two ways we tackle it is these big projects where we do like miles of pipe at once, and then we have smaller crews that are doing just spot repairs, so just one defect in a, on a city block, digging that up in a day and repairing it.
So could you take us through a typical weekday? On the weekends, everything's normal, you shut, you take all your traffic control down and it, we're good to go.
Yep.
Give us a, a typical day timeframe, what's it going to look like from six o'clock in the morning to six o'clock at night?
So we're anticipating kind of week by week, the, the project is working on a certain area, like, if we can get one section in a week and kind of move along, so the beginning of the week, the signs go up, or maybe the Friday before, this area is going to be closed next week, just to let people know, and then on Monday, the roads closed, lots of signs to let people know what's going on.
Eight o'clock in the morning, like, what time does it close?
So, I think the work hours start at eight AM.
So if we want to drive down Scenic in the morning and do something?
Yeah, if you get there at seven, you'll, you'll be fine, you go right through. You know, they'll be, so in that area where the roads close inside, there'll be trucks moving around, digging holes and pulling pipes into old pipes, and there'll be truck deliveries of, you know, not too much truck deliveries because we're doing trenchless, so we get to minimize the amount of dirt we have to haul in and out, so that's good. There'll also be traffic control people at all of the, you know, if there's a stop or a road closure, there will be somebody there, you know, to assess, oh, like, here's someone, they, they say they live right there, or there's a delivery, like, I need to get to that house, and then they, the person who's kind of doing that traffic control will let them come in, do their thing, and then get them safely out.
It's going to be dynamic traffic control, not just put a sign up and walk away?
Yeah, yes, it has to be because of that, that commitment to help people come in and out of their houses, and, and from what Councilmember Jarmov said.
Or a UPS truck.
Yeah.
So then, five o'clock, everything goes back to normal again?
Yes, every good thing gets put away, equipment gets parked off to the side of the road, kind of just in normal parking spots, and all the, if there's a, any trenches, they get plated, so the road might be a little bumpy, you know, but during those nights, but we have to put it back so it's drivable. to put it back so it's drivable.
Right. Great, Patrick. We're glad you're here. And we're glad that you repair our roads as you finish your projects. Any, let's open it up for public comment. We've got one, go ahead. Go ahead, Jeff.
So are you putting in a new pipe, or are you taking out the old pipe, why, when you put in a new pipe?
So we're doing pipe bursting for most, for scenic road mostly. So we're, the old pipe's staying there, and we're pulling that new high-density pipe in, into the old pipe. So it's kinda like, the old pipe's like a sleeve that we pull the new pipe through, and it breaks the old pipe as we pull the new pipe in. So it stays there.
Okay. And then you just punch the Ys through the, through the new pipe?
Yes.
And you said, you mentioned you're doing this five days a week, not seven days a week?
Correct.
And you mentioned that the whole project takes nine months, but we're only subject to like 20 days. So have you, like, would we have a preference in terms of like picking our 20 days out of those nine months? Like, you know, February is a lot less travel on scenic road than October is. So would we have some leeway in terms of deciding?
Yeah.
Like, when we wanted our sections, and I don't mean to like, look over here, look over here, look over here, but scenic road is probably the most traffic, most traffic street on the list of, on the list of streets. So would we, could we sort of arrange to have our work done, you know, maybe the less popular, popular, popular times of the year, which might be in, I mean, I'm spitballing, but maybe that would be January or February and not September or October?
Yeah, that was our plan, was talking with city staff and, and just strategizing on reducing the impact was January and February seemed like the, it would be the least impact.
Okay. And then you mentioned bike traffic's not allowed. So when you, when you, so let's say I come down with my bike, would it be pos, like, if you're working on, you know, let's say a six-house section of scenic on one particular day, can I get my bike up to the beginning and then use the scenic pathway for six houses and then move my bike up back onto scenic road?
Yeah, that would be a good way to do it is, because I'm assuming they can't ride on, you're not supposed to ride your bike on the dirt path, right?
Yeah, I mean, I've never seen anybody riding on the path. But I would walk my bike on the path.
So yeah, it'd be like, dismount, walk along the path, and then get back on your bike and go for it.
That could be facilitated?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and I know this is, you know, this is sort of riffing on sort of Bob's comments about not wanting to pave the streets, but, yeah, never mind.
Okay, good. Do you have a comment?
I do, sir. Real quickly, so we do have joint utility meetings with all the investor-owned utilities, speaking to Mr. Delves and Mr. Barron. So again, we try to coordinate these, these, our, our paving projects to ensure that after we pave something, we don't have a PG&E or Cal-Am coming in and digging up the streets. And we work, you know, again, obviously, Mr. Trainer and his, his staff come to that joint utility meeting as well. So we try to do the coordination. Invariably, every time we pave something, somebody wants to cut into it right away. But we do our best.
Thank you. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Do we have any public comments on this subject? This has to be directly related to the sewer project with COD.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Still James Ewing Whitman. It's related. I listened to the excellent presentation that you two men presented. Thank you. Over half the questions from this board, it's like you guys weren't listening to what they were saying. Sure you guys know what USAD means? And Dodge, the E-God? And WTF? Wow. I'll keep it a little bit brief. You know, I started getting paid as an automobile mechanic at 14 and construction at 21. It's almost 40 years. I wanna thank the gentlemen for what they produced. And I'll set an example for efficiency, efficiency and brevity, which I believe in every aspect of my life, except foreplay.
Any other public comments? Brian?
I'm Brian Sowers, resident and former Beach and Forest Commissioner. I kinda wanna challenge COD and the city in regards to this sewer change. I know the city spent a significant amount of money for a report that was addressing the potential for utility problems as we step forward in years ahead with global warming and coastal challenges. I know that COD had a significant issue at River Beach where they had a collapse of the roadway, and the sewer line completely collapsed along with that roadway. So they had to replace that sewer line, and they had to push it farther east across that road to get it in a way that it would not be impacted by future fallaway of the scenic roadway or even the bluff side that's going on along all of our bluffs along the scenic pathway corridor. Again, the report that was given to us, and we spent significant amount of money, addressed the fact that it would be advantageous for the city to address its utilities and how they were set up on areas that could be exposed to global change. And I think whether it's the sewer line or the water lines or whatever that are going specifically on scenic road, I don't know whether COD or the city or the planning department have addressed that report. And any opportunity for us, as we replace a new line, to push those lines as far to the east as we can so that any potential fallaway from the bluffs along the scenic pathway would not interrupt any of the utilities that are going on along that road. So I get, that's my main point. I did wanna also let the city know that on a walk the other day, the bluff side between 8th and 10th has a significant crack to it that is showing that bluff is falling away and has the potential to fall away and which would impact the scenic pathway and scenic road significantly. I don't know that anyone has had an opportunity to get to the city or the public works department and express their concern over that crack. But this is an area that we, has been identified, both in the report that was presented to the city previously, as well as by myself and even other forest and beach commissioners that were addressing the bluff erosion that's going on specifically between 8th and 10th. And low and behold, we're starting to see the results of that. And this crack is very concerning because it, if we don't, it has the potential to collapse. And as we, as we know, on the River Road project that fell away, it was an over $2 million fix by the county of Monterey to fix that fallaway. And I would like to make sure that the city is looking at this crack and addressing it as well as maybe re-looking at whether we can have the opportunity to push the sewer farther to the right, given, or farther to the nor, the east, so that it's away from any potential problems or any other utilities. Also, there, if there is an opportunity as well, I know we've got a lot of water flow problems on scenic, and I don't know that could be coordinated with these guys since we are ripping the street a bit. To coordinate the water flow issues, and since we're ripping the street and causing problems, whether Public Works could also address some of the water flow problems that we've got going along scenic as we're fixing the sewer line.
Thank you. That might be something worth looking at. Thank you, Brian. I'm gonna have to move on, but maybe we could have an off-the-record discussion about that with Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mel Alborn, and I'm speaking as a resident. I have two questions related to this project. The first has to do with capacity. The current capacity related to what the capacity will be for the sewer line when it's completed. Is there a change? Possibly, I would think, a small reduction if you're doing pipe burst. So that's the first part of my comment. And then the second part has to do with the adequacy of capacity related to the city's current use of the sewer system. Are we using 10% of our capacity? Are we using 85% of our capacity? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Toomey. Thanks for all of what you do. Just a quick reference on scheduling. The AT&amp;T is January 6th through February 1st next year, so that's, needs to be in the math of what you consider, because that does increase traffic for that section of our village during that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comments? Andrew, I think there might have been a question or two that we could probably, maybe you could answer? Or Patrick, I'm sorry. Got the name wrong, and it's on your shirt, so I should've known.
Yeah. Yeah, so the capacity question, there's, I think, I would say that there's really no change to the capacity. If anything, there's a slight increase in the capacity, because we're putting in a slightly bigger pipe, but that's not really, the reason for that is just to make sure that the sewage flows better, it's not to take more sewage. So, and then the question about, we, the AT&amp;T Pro-Am was gonna be blackout dates. So there would be no work on any of our projects during those, during like the peak of the AT&amp;T Pro-Am. And sea level rise, I think we're, it's a, it's a difficult question, and we need to do something now, because the state of the sewers is such that we have to do something now. And, you know, this is better, gonna be better in the future ultimately, because the pipe's gonna be a lot more resilient. You know, I hear the comment about trying to move it. You know, I, I can look at that some more. But we're, we're, we're well aware of sea level rise. Like, it, it is in our, in, in the thinking whenever we do anything, for sure. It's high on our list as well.
Good, including your entire plant down there.
Yeah, our treatment plant's in the 100-year floodplain, so we know about coastal flooding.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Any other discussion among council? All right, so I guess we can, I'm looking for a motion to, oh, we're not gonna, there's no motion. Okay. What do you, do we need to vote on anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right, so.
Is there, is there any way to, is there any way to, I mean, at this point, we're trying to authorize the actual permit, but is there any way to provide direction or to, to adjust this at all, to take into consideration some of the comments that we had in terms of, you know, trying to direct this to a, a specific timeframe that's?
You can condition it, you can condition it that way, sir. Sure.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Is that practical for you, Patrick?
We were already planning January through February without, except for AT&amp;T.
Yep.
So that's fine.
But you could, you could add that to the motion.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, my, my motion would be to approve this encroachment permit conditioned upon aiming to hit the January through February timeframe for that stretch between 8th and 13th on scenic. And then? I think 13th was due. Yep. And then also to keep the, to the extent possible, you know, if you, the, the pipe meanders, to the extent that it meanders far enough to one side that you can just squeeze a car through there, I think it would make a real difference for, for, you know, for the, the usability of the, the road and accessibility to the beach. And so to the extent practicable, if it's ever possible to have the road open, then, then that would be ideal, and to try to push for that. So those would be the two, the two conditions I would propose, and that's my motion.
You got that, Nova?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm a little bit lost.
Why don't you restate it briefly?
Let me ask my question first. Give me a second. The, the project doesn't end at 13th, it goes to San Lucia, doesn't it?
It keeps going as well. It goes to, you know, into the county, 14th, 15th.
Yes, I'm a little bit, I wonder why Hans's motion would only go to 13th and not San Lucia. And then, and then there are a whole bunch of, we should make sure that, you should make sure that your motion includes all the special conditions of approval that are listed in the, in the packet.
Yes, that was my, that was my intention, that we were approving it subject to those, for sure. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to extend it to San Lucia. I mean, question for Patrick is, where does that fall in your timeline?
I think that's okay. I think you're, you're on point about that section being the biggest impact because it's such a long stretch, and that's where most people wanna drive and park. It's easier in shorter block sections to just detour people around so they can still get through the driving along the beach, all the way around the point. They just have to take a short detour around, you know, certain sections. It's harder to do along the, that main stretch. So I think that was a good point to just kinda focus on 18th to 13th. But it would be, you know, we'll do the best we can, no matter what, so, to reduce the impact. So if you wanna make it San Lucia, that's fine.
It doesn't really call out what streets are on this encroachment permit?
Yeah, it's everything in the, it's basically from Ocean to Martin Way, I think, is where the, close to where the county line is.
Okay. Javier, is there any reason for us to start detailing out specific streets in this encroachment permit? Or are you just gonna work with them to, to determine the timing and actions through?
Right, so typically, the, the traffic control plants do come in and we, we review those. So the, the encroachment permit is not approved as of yet. The traffic control plants get vetted through like a police department. We, we basically send them out to all our partners, school districts, police department, and then we analyze those. Like Patrick was stating, if, if there's an area where that, that specific stretch is really hard because there's really no access points. Once you get past that 13th, if it's a block that they're impacting, you could detour around that block. So it's a lot easier and feasible to do that in that case.
Do you believe it's necessary for us as a council to include any specific lengths when we're approving this particular encroachment permit? Or is it, we're just approving the permit in general?
We're, I think, I mean, it, it's up to you, to you guys, of course, but.
I mean, I just think it would add a helpful, you know, it's like work, you know, things get delayed. I think it would just add a helpful kind of directive from the council.
Take another stab at it. Go ahead and take another stab.
Yeah, sure. So my motion is to approve the issuance of this encroachment permit with the special conditions of approval that are in the packet. And then two additional conditions. One is that we are aiming for the January through February timeframe for the stretch from 8th to San Lucia. And that, to the extent, the greatest extent possible, you would try to keep the road open to a car squeezing through, if at all practicable.
I second.
Is that, Andrew, is that an acceptable?
Patrick.
Patrick. It's Patrick, I can't read it from here, sorry. You look like an Andrew somehow. All right, so that's acceptable to, to Patrick, and let's take a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that nice discussion, everybody. All right, we're gonna move on to number two. Resolution 2025-023, authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement with Moffett Nickel, Inc. for coastal engineering and environmental services related to the Carmel Beach coastal protection and access improvement projects with a not-to-exceed budget of $399,013. Javier, are you gonna start this off? And you're gonna finish it?
It's all me on this one.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I have Mary here in case there's some questions at the end, but.
All right, go ahead.
So, as, as stated, this is to adopt resolution 2025-023, and it's authorizing Mr. Rarick here to execute a contract with Moffett Nickel for professional services agreement. So here's a timeline of how this project has evolved. Again, this is for infrastructure construction. So this is the engineering portion associated with construction at the beach. So in, it, for, this project came about, starting back in June of 2022. There was some studies that were initially approved as of '22, and then that same winter, we encountered some severe storms and倾 tide's. we encountered some severe storms and king tides that, that had a big impact on the infrastructure at the beach. In 2023, as part of the initial report, Haro Kasunich, which, which is a geotechnical firm, did analysis on, on the infrastructure at the beach and then, and the needs for improvements. So that report was actually produced in, in 2023, and it made various recommendations to the point where council decided to award a project in that cycle. They actually awarded two projects for a total sum of $650,000. And then, again, 2023, '24, more damage to the beach, right? And, and this is kind of a recurrence, so as a result of that one, we had significant impact to multiple stairs, revetments and whatnot. We were able to handle 90% of those repairs with, with some patchwork from public works staff. Unfortunately, there's still two stairs that are out of commission, which is Tenth Avenue and Twelfth Avenue, and, and that's where Moffett Nickel comes in. So here, this, this slide kind of gives you a glimpse of, of the specific repairs that we're focusing on. It's the Twelfth Avenue stair, and you can see from the, from the picture, the damage that is sustained, tenth, and, and again, these pictures are probably before, they are before this winter, so they could potentially be worse. And then the Fourth Avenue, uh, sea wall there. So, here we get into the gritty of, of costs, right? So, just, just like every big infrastructure project, these come with a significant amount of cost, so you can see that this project is broken, broken up into various tasks. Task one being really the, the analysis, how can I word that best? It's really the, the surveying, all the record acquisition from the condition of, of, of the stairs, the soil around it, the sand, you know, they, they have to do testing around the sea wall, see any, any kind of slippage, so, so they bring in their experts to do an analysis on these structures, and then they make, so as, as of task one, once they have all that information, they're going to make recommendations to the city, and, and we'll bring those recommendations to council, to, to, to request advice on how to proceed. But there's going to be, there's a potential for even hardening up, see what the impacts of potentially going with concrete stairs at these locations, and if that's a feasible option, because there is quite significant environmental permitting that goes with this, so we have the capabilities with this engineering firm to actually address not only the, the repair, but is actually look into potential exploration into hardening of the beach. And then, here's the synopsis really of the budget. So we do have Wallace Group who's assisting us with this project. As I indicated, there's a total budget of 650,000 allocated for this project, which Wallace is encompassing 63,000. This project would cost us approximately 400,000, which would leave us about 200, or 190,000 per construction. We have received initial estimates on, on the repair of the wall, of the sea wall, I mean, that's potentially a million dollars, right? So we just don't know, that, 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 that structure's failing and needs to be replaced. We're going to ask for direction from the engineer as to the more, you know, most feasible and, and user engineering. They're, they're a coastal engineer, so they know, or they should know, or if not, they'll develop a, a mechanism there to really lead this structure into the, into the future. So, so in conclusion, what this would do is, it would secure a contract with industry-leading engineering firm that specializes in coastal engineering. So, it's really critical to get an expert to do the work, because, you know, you can, you can, we, we went through a, a acquisition of engineering firms, and they actually ranked higher than the other two. We got a total of three, three submittals for, for this. And, and with bringing them in, it gives us the availability to, through amendments or contract modifications to, to address projects like the, the ramp, the access ramp that has failed. So, this, this would be the initial contract, but it, it would have, we would get them under contract, and the potential for, for other uses at the beach is, is probably just as significant. And, again, the recommendation is for council to approve this resolution and allow our city administrator to issue a contract with Moffett Nickel in the amount of $399,013.
Questions?
I've got a question. Thank you, Javier, for mentioning the beach ramp, and I'm just trying to understand because it was damaged, we're talking about the beach ramp south of Eighth Avenue, so it was damaged in that same time period of those 23, 24 storms, and so it's been close to two years now that it's been like that. And I know our public works director is now gone, so maybe the accountability and the responsibility falls on him, but I just can't understand for two years why it was never included anywhere for repair, especially when it falls under the same category of shoreline repairs, and we're talking about the stairs and why it wasn't included. And I know that last week, it was mentioned, Chip mentioned at the strategic priorities meeting, that we do have another ramp access for emergencies, and that's Ocean Avenue, but this is more than that? I mean, I don't understand how anyone can see that damage and see how it's further eroded and see how terrible it looks. There's pipes sticking out, there's gravel, it's just a disaster, and it's embarrassing, and it's such a high-profile area for visitors and tourists alike, that nothing has been done. So I don't know if you can answer that, I don't know who can answer that.
Do you want to take a stab at it, or, I, I mean, so it's just prioritizing, right? So, so when this project got developed, it was really, the ramp was still in place, right? This, this, I'm talking 22 and 23, so the, the projects were getting pushed towards like stairways, revetments, sea walls, so that was kind of the general focus of the project. Then we had the storms, and I don't think, this is my opinion, right, but I don't think it got re-analyzed as far as to the level of like, okay, let's prioritize the ramp over stairways, right? Different people have different priorities, and I think at that point, that decision was just continue forward with the project in hand, which was detailed for stairways and, and the wall.
Okay, well, so I just want to make sure that we do everything possible now to prioritize it and to get it fixed. So I, I'm hoping we can include it for future, every time this project comes up, that it is now part of that project.
Right, and we have our CIP budget that, you know, that we go through that approval process, that's, that's an avenue for funding a repair like that.
Well, so whatever we need to do now as a council to emphasize that we do, I believe everyone feels the same way, that we want to get that, that, that fixed and, and make it a priority as part of this.
The benefit, council member, is that if we get this firm under, under contract, then we can add, if there's a sign work, engineering work that needs to happen for the sand ramp, and then we can also add funding, so we have our CIP meeting on the 24th of this month, so in a couple weeks, add funding so we can actually make the repairs as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, I guess one question I had, I had a couple questions, three questions. One of them is, the $63,000 in project management for the Wallace Group, can you just explain more for me, like what that is here? So, yeah, I don't know if you go back a slide or two, but, you know, we're paying $400,000 for these designs, for the stairs, et cetera. What is the, what is the project management exactly?
So, so, again, the project management contract is an as-needed basis, so it's a time-material-type contract. We did use them for the development of the RFP in this case. So, so in developing the RFP, they were down here with us in, in the conference room, digging through old files and pulling old ass builds for some of these stairways, and so they, they basically do the, the legwork when we don't have the capacity to do it. So like developing this RFP, they, they work on this type of, I mean, not that we can't generate one, but it just gave us the availability to have somebody work on it exclusively.
Okay, so I might be misinterpreting, so that money's already been spent then?
The RFP portion is, the 63,000, no. We, we still have, I think, a remainder of around $40,000 on that, so we spent...
Okay, so we spent $23,000 for them to help us put the RFP together, and there's about $40,000 of that 63 left.
Right.
And so, explain for me just kind of what a project manager is doing, once we've already issued an RFP, for somebody to say, hey, here's an RFP that boxes it in, go design these stairs, what are, what are we spending money on project management on at kind of at that point, I guess?
Well, I mean, we went through, there was more than just developing the RFP, right? There was negotiations, there was vetting the consultants, so they're involved in that process.
Oh, that part makes total sense to me, I think there's real value there, but like at this point, just, and I'm not, I'm not trying to play gotcha, I'm really trying to understand what project management looks like once, once you've issued an RFP for somebody to design stairs.
So it's, it's the whole, I mean, there's different tasks, from, from reviewing, invoicing, to making sure that they, they're hitting certain timelines, there's ongoing meetings with the consultants, making sure they stay on task, like the scope is, really doesn't take a, a hard write, and then we end up with something that we're not in need of or in want of. So it, it's really, I mean, in, in my case, that's what I do, right? So it's assistance for me to push a project of this magnitude forward, I just don't have, I mean, right now, we don't have the time in staff, and that's why I think our public works director at the time was using a significant amount of project management resources.
Yeah. I have a comment on that, but I'm going to wait till the comment section. The other question I had was, you know, just quickly, you know, folks I think have been frustrated by the stairs at Tenth and Twelfth, and why it's taking so long, et cetera, and obviously, you know, I was on the Forest and Beach Commission, so we heard from the staff about some of the issues relating to permitting, et cetera, but can you just outline that again, just so the community understands why, you know, it's going to be spring or summer of 2026 before, you know, the stairs are opening in?
Right, so I think the, 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 the big impact on, on, on the project, and, and we've gone through this before, like admission trails, but the permitting process, right? So dealing with all the coastal agencies, SEQA and, I mean, Mary can explain a little bit on the magnitude of, of the reviews and the environmental process that goes behind that. The, the actual part of developing the design documents and getting that work, that, that's relatively quick.
Yep.
But they have to, they have to account for all that time in permitting.
Okay, and then just the last one to clarify, the, in here, you are already accounting for the possibility of them considering concrete stone stairs.
Right.
And I guess, how does that decision get made, about which, which kind of direction you'd go with on the design?
So, I mean, they're going to reach out to the governing agencies and, and test the waters on it, basically, for lack of better terms, right? See what conditions would come, different permitting potentially, as far as the design work behind it, I mean, it's a whole different construction process, right? So we would get cost estimates associated with that. So at that time where they come back to us after the initial analysis, we, we can make that determination, or council can make that determination, but we'll have it broken down as far as like costs and timeframes, right? Because the permitting is completely different from some, something that's a repair as something that's new construction, and concrete stairs would be considered new construction.
Okay.
You alluded to perhaps some other funding sources, or maybe you didn't, maybe I misheard you, but I'm, I'm really curious, as, so the background is, I, I did go down with Brian Sowers yesterday and have a look at the, the beach with, and it's really the bluff with a much more acute eye, and, right, I mean, the area at eighth is, I, I didn't really look at it before, especially from down below, and it, it's, it's atrocious, and it, it's not just appearance, I mean, it's, it's really close to scenic and really close to the pathway, and, you know, maybe one king tide away from being really bad. So I, I agree with Councilman Darmov of the need to elevate this for all of us, and I'm not preaching at you, it's all of us that as we look at capital spending, we have to really, really understand that, that, that has to move up. To me, that's, that, and it's not just the ramp, it really is, the whole area there is probably, in my opinion, higher priority than the revetment, not the revetment, the outflow at fourth, which is very important, and even the steps, as, I'm afraid of losing the bluff. And I, I saw what Brian saw yesterday, with that scar, which you can tell it's fresh, that it, it, the, the whole bottom part of the bluff moved a good 18 inches, and it looks like it happened fairly recently, so that's something we got to look at. So that, that's the background, and as I look at it, it's just my nature, I just start seeing dollar signs, and, you know, these are seven-figure problems, and what else is out there? Who can help us with funding coastal repairs?
Bring in Mary for this one.
There are many grants out there, because as I'm sure you know, there's a lot of different communities that are going through the same issues with, with coastal issues and sea level rise. So, we do have staff, I think, the environmental analyst that's looking into different coastal grants that are available, and, you know, it is a process that we're going through. So currently, we have a grant right now with the Coastal Commission, and we are, are going through our adaptation strategies, and as we're doing that, you know, we're constantly going to meetings with different coastal groups and, and looking into when's the right time to apply for these grants. Our consultants that are, are not with, not these construction consultants, but the consultants that are doing the adaptation strategies are very much in tune with what grants are available and what would be applicable to the city. So that's, that's something that is coming.
And, so, is, is having the design work finished important to be able to get a construction grant?
Oh, very much so, I mean, you, you have to.
You have to, yeah.
Yeah.
A final question, is Moffett and Nickel only a design firm, or do they, do they do design-build as well?
I believe they're strictly design.
Okay. This is perhaps, it's beyond the scope of this, but as, as we look at big projects, my view is sometimes if you, if you try to look at design-build firms, you, it, it limits the universe, but I love to work with construction companies that have design skills, that can design and build, because you don't have a very costly handoff from, from one to the other.
Right, but typically, in these level of projects, it, it, those, those forces are kind of separated, right? Like you have design firms that specifically work on coastal projects, you have design firms that are structural engineers that just work on tall buildings, but I, I, I see where you're, where you're headed with it, but it, it's just really tough on a project like this to have a dual force, just construction and engineering.
That's all I've got, thanks.
I have one question.
Go ahead, I've got some too, go ahead.
$187,000 for construction, do you think that's going to be enough?
That's just what's left there.
Well, I, I understand.
Do I, for the entirety of the three projects?
So, that, yeah, so $187,000, so...
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay. So, we did a project, it was presented many times to Forest and Beach, probably it's presented three times, the sand coming in and out, the, some kind of study of the shoreline infrastructure. What were the deliverables of that? How does that relate to this? I've got a few questions like this, because there's multiple projects all in the same area.
So I'll let Mary speak on that. What we used from, from, from that project that served dual purpose is the report by Haro Kasunich, but...
Yeah, I, I just so happened to bring what the deliverables were, not actually to pass out, but just on the city's website, under the environmental programs, we do have all of the deliverables, it's under the technical documents, and we have a coastal infrastructure... of the deliverables, it's under the technical documents, and we have a coastal infrastructure condition assessment, where that was something that Haro Kasunich went out and, and looked at the infrastructure. There was Task Two, was a shoreline and beach change analysis, so that one was one that was presented that showed you, you know, this is how the beach is going to change over time, and where the sand is going to be moving. And then there was a shoreline erosion exposure modeling document, and that one was showing how the storm impacts are going to be over long-term affecting the coastline. And, and then there was a coastal hazard and sea level rise vulnerability assessment that was done, and that one was, was assessing all of the different sea level rise impacts on specific places along the shoreline. And then we also had a policy review, which, that was just an internal memo that was, that was approved by staff, and we met with Coastal Commission and, and just looking into the future, and that kind of led us to getting our grant with the Coastal Commission for doing an LCP amendment, for, for the different portions of our LCP that we need to amend in order to deal with sea level rise. So that's...
How much did all that cost?
That was, okay, let me see, the combined amount was $175,000 for the Phase One, so all of those different documents, that was $175,000, and then we received a grant for $500,000 from Coastal Commission, and $50,000 was to pay for staff's project management of that, and $450,000 is to deal with the Phase Two assessment, which we're in the middle of right now.
Okay, so it was $175,000, and none of that had anything to do really with what you're presenting to us here?
Right, that's where we came up with, okay, we need to get an engineer to design some of these projects and start going, okay, what's our top priorities?
And the sand's gonna come back every year, sort of, I mean, I, I saw it three times, so it was, and it was very interesting. So, we've, we also, do you know about the Graebe Report?
Did you say gravy?
Graebe, G-R-A-E-B-E.
Yeah.
Can you describe to, to all of us what that is?
It was a report that, I mean, I've looked at it vaguely, but it, it was a report that was generated some time ago, I don't, I don't even know of the time, but it was like critical, it was like a quick assessment of, of the infrastructure, right, including stairs and...
Every nut, every nut bolt, handrail, everything about all of the wooden stairways, for sure. It was, it was like, it's not...
Yeah, no, I, we shared that, I mean, we, we do have that report, I have it in my office and...
Okay, how, how many of those things do you think we actually did? It was a recommendation for what we needed to do to make our stairways safe and sustainable, correct?
Right, yeah.
And how much of that did we actually do as a city, do you think? 10%?
No, I think probably a little more than that.
15?
I don't know.
Chip, you know, you've been here.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, Mayor, I mean, we did a lot of the handrail work and a lot of the tread replacement, you know, it's more than 10, it's probably less than 90%.
I'll give you that.
You know, I, you know, I don't know, we can, we can find out though, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly find out.
Okay, but we, we have done a thorough, very detailed assessment of all the wooden stairways in the last seven years, probably, and, and we, we, we didn't do all the work that was requested, and we're paying the price for it now, probably. Did we not hire a structural engineer to look at the existing stairways? Because I thought I got a copy of that, and I actually gave it to a couple of construction companies.
We, we did, we hired actually Kyler Engineering, I believe, to do an assessment, to see if it was feasible to open up the two stairs that was, that were closed down, and, and, I mean...
I think, I think he was really looking at, could we repair the existing stairs versus reconstruct? Brandon, is that the way you would differentiate? Because Brandon was working hard on trying to see if we could open, repair, do some of the repairs ourselves in-house to open one of the staircases.
Correct, yes. Martin Way, you did.
We did Martin Way, yeah, but the two, the two that we're talking about.
Yeah, so the two closed ones, we had Kyler Engineering come and do a report, and it turns out the, the staircase on the most southern end is, is far beyond any sort of repair under, you know, $100,000, $200,000, especially because of how it's benched into the hill. The more northern staircase is, is repairable, quote unquote, but not something we can do in-house. The stringers, which are the large pieces of lumber that go up each side, they're split essentially down the middle by the bolts that went through there, so those large pieces of, you know, four by 12, you know, 27-foot-long lumber have to be replaced. We did, we do have a quote to do essentially a repair that would be an interim step until this more engineered version happens, so we could spend close to $100,000 to fix one staircase, to repair it, more or less, but those repairs, you know, that's an understatement of what it takes to fix it, because it's large pieces of lumber, you know, custom ordered and things like that, so it got pretty expensive just to repair, quote unquote, that would last a year or two until this is done.
But we do have a report that says a thorough analysis of all, all of the wooden stairways and what, what we could do to improve them. We have a structural engineering report for both stairways that did have include what you should do if you wanted to reopen them and repair them.
To repair them, yes, it doesn't, it doesn't go into any of the geotechnical work or anything like that for permanent, but it did get into if you wanted to make them safe right now, what you would have to do before letting people walk on them again.
And I heard from Javier that, that our engineers came in and the project manager came in, and they found as-built plans for all the wooden stairways, which I've been looking for, for two years, so.
No, we, we found some as-built plans, not, not the entirety, no, that we found a couple, but...
So we've lost the plans for our stairways?
I, I don't, I don't have the answer.
That's an answer, but, okay, so it, I guess my concern in all this, before we open it up to the public, well, I'll, I'll save it for conversation. Okay, let's open it up to the public if we don't have any other questions from us. No questions?
Yeah, I have something's rattling around in my head, and I'd like to understand Mr. Sowers's comment. So do you, do you know what Mr., Chip, do you or your staff know what Mr. Sowers is talking about, or Bob, without me?
I'm not aware of it, sir, so, I mean, my immediate thought was I need to go down there with Mr. Sowers and/or Mr. Delves to see this, this fracture.
Can you describe it, Bob?
I did my best, and it, it just appears to be a significant piece of the bluff that has moved, because it left a scar behind, it's just black dirt behind it, and so it just looks to me like...
Is it the ice, the ice plant?
It's within, it's within the middle of the ice plant.
And there's a gaping hole, or is it just a, is it just, is the, is there, is there like space, or is it just ice plant that shifted down?
It's the ice plant, yeah, and, and maybe that's all that happened, but it's just obvious, and you just...
Okay, to look at it.
It was...
I'm, I'm okay.
Let's, I'll save it for the conversation, my comment. Let's open it up to the public now, anybody have anything to say? This is specifically related to the coastal protection, protection engineering project that we're looking for funding on.
So Brian Sowers, I, I'd stated at the last meeting that I really feel that it would be helpful to push this resolution off and come up with a strategic plan around what we're doing at the beach. We've spent on reporting close to a million dollars at this point without anything being done, whether that's $450,000 of a grant from the Coastal Commission, to $175,000 to EMC and Herowick, or whatever their names are previously, for the assessment of the infrastructure, and now we're talking about another $650,000 for engineering without anything being done. We've got the Eighth Avenue thing, which we'll take a look at, we've got the Delmar Hill and the Volleyball Hill, the erosion that's going on, on that hillside is embarrassing, as a resident of Carmel. Those are the pictures that we have, a beautiful white sand coming down the hallway. If you walk on that right now, you'll see nothing but eroded sandstone, with the potential for a collapse of the Delmar Hill as well as the Volleyball Hill. We, in the past, were recommended by a previous council going back 20 years ago to be pushing sand with a tractor all the way up the beach and up the hills to cover. We've gotten a bobcat to take a sprinkle of sand onto the Delmar Hill and the volleyball courts, and it's, it doesn't hold up, we've got huge tourist traffic, we've got a, a lack of water flow that goes down Ocean Avenue and the volleyball courts because we don't have good drainage. It's eroding that hillside. If that hillside collapses, it will be an enormous amount of money. So, these are things that are, that are, you know, you can walk down as a, as a resident and look at right now and, and question, what are we doing as a city to protect the beach? We need a strategic plan about what we're going to do and how we're gonna do it, whether it's the ramp that's been destroyed to the hillsides, the sand redistribution. We've spent a million dollars, and no one's sitting here with a plan in place that's saying, this is how we're strategically building a plan to fix everything and make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's, and do it in a cost-effective way that gets the residents behind it and, and really continues to have and give, you know, the city of Carmel a real beautiful place that is our most important asset, and, and it's not that way right now, we really need to turn this down soon, or we're gonna be spending a lot more money to fix things because we continue to get reports without any action. So I, I'm more than, I'm more than willing to roll up my sleeves and help in any way, shape, or form to build a plan around all the stuff we've done, and I look forward to hopefully going down that pathway. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, we appreciate your commitment to this.
Yeah, my name is James Ewing Whitman. I'm to understand that the project management is 63,000, and so far the design is almost 400,000, and the to-be-decided construction is 187,000. I mean, US police officer, 187's murder, so I'm not really sure what to say. I mean, I've, I've attended a lot of meetings and things like this, but there's nothing special about it for by 12, by 27. Call Pinecone Lumber, they can process it and do whatever you want, I mean, they can make stuff that are over 100 feet long. So it's just kind of fascinating to see how this room is operating, and I'll leave it at that. We are going to be able to comment before the end on the closed session, I believe.
There'll be another comment section then.
Yes, hi there. I'm, I'm so glad we're talking about erosion and handrails and stairways, and I just, I'm wondering, what about protection of the people? Does this matter to us at all, protecting the people when they access the coast, or is it just about wildlife and stairwells? How, how about this? Does any of this matter? Chip, that you invited him here, and then he got attacked? Does this matter, Alessandra? Are we gonna talk about stairwells and erosion? Anybody up there care about the people? Five years ago? Anybody? We gonna continue to blow smoke about how we're protecting the beach? What about us? Chip? This was your order that caused this. What about the people?
Any other?
This is what Chip did, okay? He invited a tourist to come to the beach, and then he had him attacked by the Carmel Police Department, okay, from behind. Ryan Pyrit hid that body camera footage for me four times, it's been destroyed. What about the people?
Do we have any other public comments on this subject? Anybody out in Zoom?
Yes, Charles Najarian, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure about the timing of this, and my comments may be considered a little premature, but I wanna, I wanna mention the California Environmental Quality Act, and when I look at this project, and I haven't done a dive at all, I might not get everything right, but I think there's obviously concerns about public health and safety, there's a National Marine Sanctuary essentially be working in it, traffic congestion in terms of how you deal with that during the construction phase, and potentially other projects in Carmel under construction at the same time. When I, and I really, really helped to hear a competent city council talk about issues today. I don't know if this is gonna be a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR, I have no idea at this stage, but I don't know if you could fold this into the LCP amendment, that might be the vehicle for SEQA. And I, the gentleman's comment about strategic plan makes sense to me, and I think SEQA would help you, as he said, dot all the i's and cross all the t's if you use it appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Catherine, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I think I'm commenting on the performance reviews for the city manager and the, the city attorney and...
That, that's gonna be later in the meeting.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, that's gonna be later in the meeting, this is, this is only for the coastal project.
What you wanna do is go toward...
I'm, I'm sorry, this is the wrong subject, you're gonna have to wait till later in the meeting to comment about that, thank you. All right, any other?
There's no more comments.
All right, let's bring it back for a conversation and a comment.
Shirley.
Did you wanna say something, Shirley? All right, one more from the audience. It's okay.
Shirley Moon, I'm hoping that our alarm barrels are all going off on this. We keep seeing little bits and pieces of the failure that's happening along our coast, and I hope that in the future, we aren't looking back and saying, if only. I couldn't agree more with Alessandra about the ramp. My concern, which involves the ramp, is that we have these enormous logs down on the beach that are smashing against our seawalls, and this report that you've just read, many of the seawalls are in pretty good condition, and they won't be, I don't know how much those logs weigh, but they're ramming against those seawalls, and they're also tumbling the revetments and scarring up the sandstone. We can't, excuse me, remove those because we can't get the backhoe down on the sand, which means that the ramp is also connected to this damage that's being done. So I'm hoping that we really, really understand that all of these pieces are connected, and it's not a really good picture right now, and thanks for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Shirley. All right, let's bring it back for comments now and conversation about this with the council.
I have some...
Go ahead.
I have some comments, so thank you, everybody. You know, I agree with sort of my councilman, fellow councilmember's comments about the sand ramp, and when I asked a question about $187,000 in the coastal protection budget and funding bucket, it seems like that sort of generic budget bucket is pretty devoid of the money that it's gonna take to fix these things. And so I don't understand why, you know, one, one path forward for me would be to, you know, come back next month. It seems like it's a technicality, it seems like we're not doing the Fourth Street, it seems like we're not doing the, the, sorry, the Eighth Avenue sand ramp, you know, because of a technicality, which is that the Eighth Avenue sand ramp wasn't... of a technicality, which is that the Eighth Avenue sand ramp wasn't included in this budget, in this budget bucket when we did this last year. And so since this, since this bucket seems to be, you know, is entitled coastal protection budget and funding, I don't know what it would take to include the sand ramp in the budget into, in that, the design of that item into the bucket. But I don't think that that needs to wait until June to do that. I think we could pretty easily accomplish that, you know, with some discussion tonight. We could pretty easily accomplish that next month, even on the consent agenda, to just put the design, to put the design of the sand ramp or whatever engineering we need to do. This is an engineering project and per Javier's comments, I don't know why we wouldn't simply move ahead with this, with this, with this item, with the Moffett and Nichol item and come back next month with the alteration to the item that would include the sand ramp that would come out of this same bucket that has 187,393 left in it, since it's clear that that's not enough money anyway. I'll take, you know, I would take a little bit of issue with, and also I would say, you know, per my comments about, my question about Mr. Sowers's comment about the slope, I mean, I would assume that that would be a part of whatever would happen, you know, if we decided to move forward next month with including that, that whatever slope thing is going on over there near this land ramp, obviously that should be taken care of too. So perhaps we could just, perhaps we could just do some sleight of hand and, you know, with the assumption that the money to fix these things will be, will be coming, will be coming next year. I would also, you know, I'd also take a little bit of an issue with the characterization that this is another plan because this is not a plan. Like this is actually the repair of budget, the repair of these access points to the beach. Like this is actually, you know, we did the Haro and Cassinage Report, you know, that was, that was the precursor to a plan. And this seems like the implementation of, this seems like the, you know, these four things, the sand ramp, the two staircases and the Fourth Avenue outfall are all pretty serious items that need repair, especially in terms of the sand ramp. And I view this not as a plan, but as a, for, a forward motion to begin repairing the access to the beach.
Thank you. Hans.
I agree with everything Jeff just said. I think on this topic, that's, I mean, the only expansion I'd have of this conversation, and maybe it's just more for an ongoing budget conversation, is it, it seems like we used to, every year or two, move sand with a tractor and push it back up the hill. And I haven't seen that happen since COVID and I could just not have been here, but, and then we used to go down and address the revetments and move the, we kind of restack the boulders. Because that's the other thing I observed is that, you know, they're supposed to be angled like this and they're starting to be angled like that. And I assume that's a combination of surf and erosion that just pushes them. And, you know, they need to be restacked and maybe we need more. And those are things I think we already know how to do. I don't know that, I don't know it's a question. You know, is that something that we have to hire outside expertise for? Or do we have the in-house expertise to know what to do and maybe we just need to hire a little more muscle to do it? So I'll just put that out there.
So I would agree with some of the comments that have been made, particularly about the, the sand ramp in that area around Eighth. You know, to Jeff's point, it feels like a procedural question, you know, we're handed kind of a ready-to-go contract and it's like, well, what do I do now? I want to add something to it. But I think that we should, you know, I think that we should provide direction to the extent that that's possible, how it's agendized, to, to add some engineering work to this, to this contract to address that, that area. I think we need to be flexible enough to deal with issues as they arise and that's clearly a significant potential issue. You know, I think that the concept of, you know, Mr. Sowers's comment about a strategic plan for the beach actually makes, makes sense if, for no other reason than it's a forcing function to take these documents. You know, we get these really great reports that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars and you have to have like some translational effort to go from that thick book that's sort of sitting on your desk or in a singularity on your computer and, and to go from that to like an actionable plan. And obviously we have the capital improvement project budget and that process, but you lose the specific focus on the beach. And it might be nice to go through, look at their recommendations and then just prioritize, you know, here's how we want to do this, you know, in this order for these reasons. I think that would be a helpful process to go through. And then my last comment was about the, this notion of, you know, concrete stairs or stone Because I had that same thought. It was interesting you brought this up when I was looking at this, you know, the other night. Because a lot of those, and partially it might be that they're sitting on bedrock and maybe that's not possible with some of these other stairs, I'm not sure. But there are, we have a number, obviously, of stairs that are concrete and stone. I think they actually look really nice. And, you know, for whatever reason, they don't seem to have been undermined in the same way that these, that these wooden stairs have. And so, you know, I think that that's actually a really interesting thing to explore. I still have questions about kind of who at the end of the day, you know, makes that decision and where does that, you know, come back to? But I would encourage you to explore that possibility, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really briefly, thank you all of you for your statements and your support on this. I really do appreciate that and I really think we need to make this a priority. I mean, it's gone on too long and it is just a terrible eyesore and it's just a shame for such a beautiful community to have all these areas, whether it's the stairs with the plywood, you know, and, and the way this ramp is. I think we just absolutely as a community need to say, let's get this done and let's get this repaired. I mean, this has gone on for way too long and there's other issues connected, as Shirley mentioned, you know, regarding the maintenance of the beach. So we need to really step this up and make this a higher priority. And as Brian mentioned, it would be a great idea to do a plan for the, for the beach. But wouldn't that first come from the Forest and Beach Commission? Or is this something that the council would work on? We'd need to figure that out, but that's important as well. So thank you.
So after the $175,000 beach study, we were told that in 50 years, Scenic Road is likely to fall in the ocean and then all the houses with it eventually. My public comment, I wasn't mayor at the time, I was a resident. My public comment was, I don't think it's going to take 50 years, it could be next year. And it turns out that might be true based on what we're seeing. And Shirley and I have spent a lot of time down there and we've seen this happening for the last five years. My concern is those stairways were built for $100,000. It took two months and they were intended to last five years and they have had some repairs over the years. But now we're talking and we've already spent money to structural engineer, another report, other, other money. And now we're going to spend, I think there was $96,000 to study those stairs? Was that, something like that? And then, I mean, I'm, I'm, there's so many studies going, I don't even know what we're doing anymore. I really don't, I'm confused and I know a lot about this. On the other hand, we need to get started at some point and do something. I like the master plan idea, I just don't think we have a couple of years to figure it out. I also am just nervous to go down a path with this project. We don't even have a public works director right now. And we really need a public works director, even if it's an acting one. We had one, I know, a couple of years ago when Bob was out. So this is just a lot of money and I just, I just don't want to get to the end of this and find out that we were going to do it again and again without actually fixing anything. So I'm just concerned that we're, we really don't have good leadership to take on this project and really bring it to the finish line where we know what we're going to get at the end of it. This also has a little bit of the feel of the pergola at Sunset Center where we spent $80,000 on two different design processes. And then at the budget meeting last year, we finally asked the question, how much is this going to cost? And it was $450,000 or something like that. And instantly the project died. And this could be a $5 million project, we don't know. And yet we're spending $600,000, $700,000 to do this right now. So, and if, and if it's going to cost that much, what do we need? Brian and I called the Coastal Commission about the stairways last year, I think, and found out that you don't need to go through a big permitting process. You can fix like-for-like repairs. You can't go build stone stairways, but you could do like-for-like replacement and then go ask for permission and do whatever you need because it's our job to provide coastal access via those stairs. So I don't, I don't believe this is a mischievous nature preserve situation where it's going to take a year and $300,000 in permits to, to get this project moving forward. So I'm just asking that question. I don't know. I don't have all the answers sitting here.
I have--
Yes, go ahead.
I have some remarks. So in terms of the, in terms of the mass, in terms of the, this talk about a master plan, you know, we have a shoreline management plan. Like we have a thing, we have a document in place that describes what we should be doing. And to me, you know, it's been a couple of years since I, since I dusted that tome off the shelf. But to me, the information that we need is in there and it's more, you know, I don't, I don't see the need to necessarily replicate that unless, you know, replicate that on the side. If there's updating to do, then we should do that. But I'm satisfied that for the time being, we have a plan that will get us, will get us through. To Dale's comments, you know, Dale, to your comments, I agree with, I agree with the mayor's comments about like-for-like. I don't, I don't understand, I share his skepticism. I don't understand why, if we were placing a wooden staircase with another wooden staircase that was basically the same, why, I don't understand the hang-up with regards to the permitting, the permitting of that. And in fact, I agree with that so much that I would, I will say that I find the idea of stone stairs, I find the idea of exploring stone stairs to be sort of off the table for all the reasons that you mentioned. Like I don't, I don't understand what the permitting would be to install stone stairs. We don't know what the condition is. And I think that we, you know, in this, in this, in this thing, we've allocated $399,000 for design and engineering services for these three things that are important to the beach. And my fear is that if we give sort of, if we give sort of fractured advice in terms of, yeah, you can explore the stone stairs too, that we really need to increase the $399,000 to $449,000 and we need to add $50,000 to do this exploration, to do this exploration. And I'm, I would say I'm rather loathe, I'm rather loathe to do that. I don't think, I don't share Dale your skepticism that, I share your skepticism about our ability to manage this project, you know, without a public works director. But the good thing is, you know, Chip is recruiting for that. And by the time we are ready to do the work, you know, Chip has assured us that we will have someone in place. So in the, in the six months it takes to do the design work for these three and hopefully soon four projects, I'm confident that the city will have in place, you know, the, the sort of project management leadership, the public works leadership to get that work done. I think in terms of, you know, in terms of, you know, we don't know whether it's a six or seven million dollar project. Yeah, I think that's absolutely true. And I think it's, I think it's especially true, you know, it's difficult for me to imagine the stairs coming in at six or seven million dollars. But it's pretty easy for me to imagine the Fourth Avenue outfall coming in at six or seven million dollars or at least half that. You know, I think, I don't remember what the budgeted number for the six or seven, what the budgeted number, you know, what the five-year-ahead budgeted number for the, for the outfall was. I think it was three or four million dollars or something. And, you know, that's a big number, you know, for sure. But I don't see, you know, looking at the condition of that, of that outfall, it's hard to imagine what the alternative is. And it's, you know, I think it would be unwise to say, we don't know, you know, we're afraid of spending the four million dollars when the fact is that, you know, when the sort of the facts on the ground are, there's going to cost what it's going to cost and we don't really have any control over that. And we should spend the money, you know, we should spend the money and figure out how to fix it. You know, because that's basically our job. You know, that's the job of the government, that's the job, I think, of the government is to, you know, is to fix that, that thing where, you know, basically a third of Carmel drains into the water. So I think, I think that that's important and I think we should, I think we should move ahead. I think that the, you know, the comments made by the Eighth, the comments made about the sand ramp are important and I think we should figure out how to expeditiously put that stuff in ahead and we should, you know, cross our fingers a little bit and trust that, you know, and trust that staff is going to get someone in place and get the leadership in place and that the Fourth Avenue outfall isn't going to cost eight million dollars to fix.
Okay. Thank you. Just to fill in the gaps there with the, the management plan, it is a great document and everybody should read it. And I've read it many times. Greg D'Ambrosio was one of the authors and he confirmed to me that in 21 years, we have not followed pretty much anything in that document. So that's why the beach is in the condition it's in. He used to do it every single year and that's confirmed.
I'll have one comment and then I'll have a motion.
Yes.
To the idea of a strategic plan, I think Jeff hit it right spot on. We have a strategic plan. We have lots of strategic plans. What we need is an action plan. And action plans, you don't have to hire somebody, we don't have to spend a lot of time. It really is a matter of saying, what's, what is broken at the beach and what sequence do we choose to fix it?
Exactly.
And sometimes we have answers to questions and sometimes we don't and we don't, you have to go get the answers. But I think this project, I agree with those who've said it, it's, it's not more studying, it's designing. We do have to design before we build on the Fourth Avenue and the ramp and the general, you know, Eighth and Ninth Street area. Perhaps we don't need to include the stairs in the scope of work and instead direct staff to at least explore, doing what we can to, to repair the stairs. Because it sounds, like what Brandon said, at least with one of them, it's possible. And it would cost $100,000. Well, if we're going to spend $95,000 studying it, maybe it's time to just move. So, Hans, did you want to?
Yeah, I, the only thing I would say is sometimes these things sound good. And if, like if it sounds good, it really does. And, but I want, I'd love somebody on the staff, and Brandon, if you want to speak to this, like, is the, is the $100,000 quick fix, like how long do we reasonably expect that to last? I mean, the mayor obviously made a point that the original one wasn't designed to last forever, but like give us like a realistic, right, give us a realistic sense of like, how, how long do we expect the $100,000 fix to last versus, you know, versus the, the longer-term fix? I mean, give us the value proposition here. And this was your recommendation, so make a, make a defense of it.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would maybe counter this being our recommendation. It was just a report back on what was possible. We were asked to find out, first of all, are the two staircases that are closed safe for humans to traffic on? And that's what that engineer proved out, they would, no, they were not until such a time that you did certain repairs. And so that's what came out of this. And what, what they cost is what they cost. It's up, you know, up to the council if they want to do that. With respect to how long the repairs will last, it's a bit of a wild card question because we don't know what the storms do. I mean, if we have another storm in the next year or two that uplifts the stairs from the, so the way they're designed right now, the part of the failure was, the way they're designed, when they're uplifted, those stringers up the side split. And so if we were to see another storm where they actually lift the stairs again, then it lasts a year, if it's a year after that. The way that they would be repaired, assuming there's no major, you know, tidal issues with those stairs, they could, they could last a long, long time, you know, five, 10, 15 years, who knows? But I can't say what the ocean's going to do. My supposition is, and I'm looking Javier and Mary to make sure I don't say something wrong, my supposition is though the engineering for a more permanent solution would be to sort of like, you know, battle-ready those stairs a little bit more for what the ocean is doing now versus the original design, which has been the design for a long time, these wooden stairs, and it just keeps getting repaired. So I don't know.
So can somebody tell me what the difference is between, I mean, obviously they haven't designed these stairs, but what would the potential difference be between fixing the current stairs versus what a new design might look like based on the conversations you guys have had?
Which could require coastal permitting and--
Right, there's, there's different avenues to fortifying wood stairs. Right, right now what we have out there was engineered, I don't know-- Right now, what we have out there was engineered, I don't know, 30 years ago?
Nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah. So, so, the engineer would be the expert to give you that, but there's ways to fortify structures like that, potentially triggering additional permitting. I, I, we, we don't have that answer as of yet.
So, that's not giving me a ton of confidence?
No.
You know, the, because if, if I'm going to take longer and spend more money, like, I want something that I feel like is going to, you know, withstand. You know, I actually, I get your comments on the, the concrete stair question. And again, we're dealing with incomplete information here, but if we could, we've already had the stairs down. If we could get to a point where we had some stairs that we knew were solid for a long period of time, you know, that would have value to me. Because we could be in a situation again where it's like...
Next year.
Yeah, we're, we're without the stairs again for, you know, a year, a couple of years, right? So, yeah, it's a, I don't know, I, I don't, maybe that muddled it more than clarified.
It could also be that the Coastal Commission doesn't approve it, so we just don't know. By the way, I also found out a while back that, that originally, the 12th stairway was supposed to be temporary, and they have a plan, they had a plan to put a stone stairway a little bit further south from the wooden stairway. And I'm not sure we have those plans, but if we had those plans, that was actually approved. They just decided at the last minute, apparently, let's just not do it right now. Otherwise, we'd have, it would be like the 13th stairway. All right, so...
Can I try a motion?
You can.
I move to approve the resolution in our packet to authorize the city administrator to execute the professional services agreement with Moffett and Nickel for coastal engineering and environmental services associated with the Carmel Beach coastal protection and access improvement projects to include the Fourth Avenue Outfall, the Eighth Avenue Ramp, and erosion conditions, and the 10th and 12th Street stairways. And to come back, you know, for a not-to-exceed fee of 399-013, recognizing that we've just inc, that this motion has increased the scope, and that you would come back to council with the cost of that increase in scope.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Well, I have a question. I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Can you, can you legally do that? Like, can you, are you going to be able to execute a contract for three hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars where the scope is more than what the contract you have in front of you is?
Yeah, I want to get this going, Mr. Barron.
So, so do I. My question is, is this the right way to do it, as opposed to coming back? You know, you had mentioned earlier that we could come back, you know, next month with an, with an alteration to the contract, that we would have a dollar amount on, and we would just increase the size, the con, we would execute the first contract now, the original contract in the packet now, and come back next month, or come back next month with the alteration to include, to include the, the, the sand ramp and the bluff erosion that we've, the bluff issue, whatever that might be.
Yeah, I'm not convinced that...
That we've, that we've been talking about.
Yes, sir. I, I apologize for interrupting you. I, I'm not convinced that the, that the discussion would be any, any shorter next month, so my, my encouragement is for you to pass this, to approve this motion as, as directed. And if I need more money, I will come back next month and, and ask you for it. And I will amend this, this contract next month.
So, the con?
At least I can get going.
I'm just going to repeat this back to you. So, we're going to increase this, you, you're confident, you're comfortable amending the contract to increase the scope and keeping the, keeping the price the same?
I am, sir.
Okay.
And we need to keep in mind that we're not, this has nothing to do with repairing the beach stairways.
I said it does. I included it in my motion.
Yeah, he's got...
Just after the conversation, that's kind of what I heard.
No, it doesn't include, I think, so, I want to answer your question because I, because I want to make sure I understand your question. It, it includes the engineering repair of the staircases, or whatever this, you know, the engineering sort of rebuild of these staircases, but not any of the construction costs.
Well, once we decide to spend a hundred thousand dollars to design them, I think we're pretty well down that path, right?
Yeah.
So, so there will be no repairs to the stairways for a period of time? Because if we're going to change the stairs to meet this new design, we are going to be probably in a coastal commission permitting process, which could take a while, and cost money. That's what we're voting on, right?
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'm not.
I want to make it clear, because the public wants us to open the stairways, and this is not saying that.
To the earlier, you know, the comments earlier, I'm not convinced that the permitting process of replacing one set of wooden stairs with a substantially identical set of wooden stairs would be particularly onerous, like, however you want to define substantially, substantially identical. I think that's a completely different path than, obviously, than replacing them with this, with, with stone stairs. But the wooden stairs seems like that would just be an issue, wouldn't, wouldn't be a particular issue.
The pillar, the pillar of the Coastal Commission is access.
Yeah, I can't imagine that we would need a hearing for that. And then the, and then the sand ramp, well, that seems like an emergency, and there are different, there are different Coastal Commission, there are different procedures for emergency repairs of things that are already on the, on the, on the coast.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I, well, no, I was going to say, I think I'm prepared to support Bob's motion.
Let's go back and do a shorthand version of your motion, so we know what we're voting on.
I, or I could read what I understood.
Yeah, that'd be better.
Okay, so, this is what I heard. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Delves, authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with Moffett and Nickel for coastal engineering and environmental services related to the Carmel Beach coastal protection and access improvement projects to include Fourth Avenue Outfall.
Outfall.
Eighth Avenue Ramp and erosion conditions, 10th and 12th Street repairs.
Stairways.
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 With a not-to-exceed budget of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand and thirteen, and to come back with a request to increase the amount of the contract, if necessary, due to the increased scope of the project, and that was seconded by Councilmember Jarmov.
Bueno.
Okay, all right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion case.
All right. Yeah, we're going to take a bio break now for 12 minutes?
Yeah, yes.
12 minutes. We'll, we'll restart about 20 till. Thank you, everybody, for that good conversation.
All right.
All right, we're going to get restarted here. And before we actually get started with the next resolution, I'd like to make an apology of sorts to our acting Public Works Director, Mary Bilsey. We do have an acting Public Works Director, and she's doing an amazing job because she's having to do her real job, which is environmental services, and then run the entire Public Works Department. And she's doing a great job. My statement was more forward-looking in terms of taking on this large project. It's a lot to ask of her to do. So, and we've got some good options for Public Works Directors, hopefully, and we'll get moving on that. So, I apologize, Mary, for that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That goes a long way. And just to reinforce, Javier has really stepped into a real leadership role as well with Mary. So they're kind of attached at the hip. And Javier is an engineer. And so he's providing all that technical knowledge and help and really working very closely with Mary. So we're grateful, and I'm grateful that you both stepped into this fire. Thank you.
As I'm sure we all are. All right, so we're going to jump right ahead to number three here. Resolution 2025-024, authorizing the city administrator to execute amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Advanced Design Consultants, Inc. for electric panel upgrades and electric vehicle charging-related projects for not to exceed fee of $58,020. Javier's on the hot seat again.
Counsel, so just a little background of this project as we did in the previous one. Can you hear me? Okay. We issued a contract to ADC for Advanced Design back in 2023 for EV. The first item was electrical panel monitoring. We wanted to do our load testing on our panels at some critical buildings that we were having some issues with the electricity. They came and did all that testing. As part of that contract, we also included upgrading the electrical vehicle stations at Vista Lobos and also providing engineering for fleet-exclusive EV charging stations at Vista Lobos as well. Then additionally, we are pursuing potentials for electrifying Sunset Center as well as moving the commercial service that's currently on the ramp down to the parking area. That's in addition to the more critical one, which is Vista Lobos. This pending amendment for $58,000 would allow us to finalize the design, which is basically there. It's just compiling the specifications, which need to go out as part of the design documents. And then at the Vista Lobo site. The critical part to point out here is that we are partnering with PG&E, who is funding the transformer upgrades at these locations. And then we have staff, as Mary indicated, we have staff that's assisting us with grants. And we're pursuing grants actively for reimbursement on some of these chargers already. So here's a couple diagrams that show the potential for EV installation. On the left, you see the commercial site, which there currently is, I believe, a dual charger there now. But we would, PG&E is going to be upgrading the transformer that serves the Vista Lobos site right now, currently. And so the capacity is going to increase from the current amount of chargers. We're going to upgrade to six. So there'll be more commercial EV chargers for people visiting the town. And additionally, we are engineering the panel since currently it's, the panel that's there is a fire hazard. So we'll be upgrading that panel for Vista Lobos as well. And then the Sunset Center, which is the center one, that one's still really in the planning stages. They've provided us with the initial design concepts. But PG&E is also willing to fund, it's a Rule 29 project, where they'll fund the transformer, switchgear for this type of project, really expensive hardware to be able to provide charging stations for the city. This one's still, is not a funded project as far as like construction goes, but we're exploring that possibility as well. And then on the right, you see that's the fleet of charging, which is closer to Taurus. PG&E would be supplying the transformer there as well as the switchgear meters. And we would be installing some city-exclusive charging, which is only for our fleet. So what this amendment would allow us to do is to push these projects into the construction stage, right? We were talking about actually executing on some of this design. So this would get us into construction. And ADC or Advanced Design would provide construction management because it's a specialty. We don't have that in-house. So they would provide the construction management through the installation of the project. And as you can see, the last item on here, I want to point out that we do, we are requesting allowance of $15,000 for any potential alterations or modifications or if we need ADC for a specific project that is maybe not associated with this, then we want a little bit of cushion there so we can modify on the fly and not have to come back to council. And that kind of sums up my presentation. We're asking for you guys to approve the resolution allowing our city administrator to execute the amendment with ADC.
Thank you, Javier. A nice presentation. Jeff, do you have any comments or questions? Hans?
Yes. So one was, you know, on the Sunset Center, we had a discussion about like a retaining wall a couple meetings back. And I made a comment about, you know, I'm not super excited about investing, it was $800,000 or something.
$900.
To a location that is currently slated to be redeveloped, you know, as a housing project. And I have that same comment here, you know. And even if, you know, I'm obviously leading a group that's trying to change the direction of that. But even sort of abstracting from that, that feels like a site that at some point is going to turn into something else, presumably. And I'm just wondering, is it, would it be better to pick a different site for, if we're going to do EVs? And I don't pretend to know exactly what the right site is. I'm just, I don't know, even something like Del Mar, you know. So that's my first comment or question. And then my other question is, is there, do we have a sense of the, how much use the existing EV chargers get?
As far as use, I know that they get used quite frequently. I think they're slow chargers, so the potency on the charging is not super desirable. So we are looking at upgrading and potentially bringing some, well, we are looking to bring fast chargers in.
I guess, is there a, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I guess I would parlay off Mr. Buddha's question. Is the service upgrade at Sunset Center, would that benefit, does that benefit the whole property? I mean, so if there would no, if that would change in use and there would no longer be EV chargers there, so it's purely, the upgrade is purely for the EV chargers?
Right, this grant program is EV-exclusive.
Okay, so that's the PG&E grant program. Okay. I guess I would answer your second question is, we have, I mean, I think we can get the data from what they call ChargePoint.
Right.
We don't have that in our hip pocket, but we can tell you how often, how often they're used. But I agree with Javier that they are, they're trickle chargers. They're not, they're not the high, the rapid chargers.
Yeah, I would love to just know how much the existing chargers are used. You know, obviously, we're moving towards a world where there's going to be, there's going to be plenty of demand for this. And it's a question of like, is it in the right spot? You know, I think having some downtown makes a ton of sense. You know, aesthetically, do I want them like on a street downtown? You know, maybe in a parking lot's a nicer place to have them. But I do have concerns about that location because long-term, something's going to happen there. The other question I had was, and this is my own ignorance, you know, we're basically building like the gas station of the future. Like we're investing the money in what's essentially like a gas station for an electric vehicle. Do we, as a city, get any opportunity to recoup cost on that? Like is there, when somebody pays for their electric charging, is there like a cut that we get?
Right, so not to get too far ahead, but like Sunset Center, we've already run some projections for like, you know, five to 10 years down the line. And there's potential for, I mean, I don't even know if I brought it, but we did do an evaluation, staff was helping us with that. And there's potential for recouping quite a significant amount of money there. So PG&E has a fixed rate, which is like 10 to 15 cents a kilowatt, I believe. And there's a potential for up to 30, 35 other competing, or other cities charge that amount. So we have an analysis that, I mean, I wish I would have brought it today, but we can share where we would potentially be not recouping because, well, we would be bringing in the city potentially millions of dollars over a period of time, right? If that does happen and they're used. I mean, it all depends on the usage.
I would say that, you know, this is a project because this was one of the themes or pillars of the last council. So it fell underneath. And this came into being with our climate adaptation, climate change plan. And we're trying to electrify our own fleet, obviously. We've got a lot of electric vehicles in our fleet, number one. And then on Thursday, when we left, Mr. Pirat caught me in the, after our Thursday meeting, and there were three cars charging there. Not that that's any kind of scientific, you know, metric, but that was, we left Sunset, what, at like three? And there were three cars charging there, if that makes any difference.
I've got a question. It's actually a bit of follow-up to Hans's because I had the exact same question I was going to ask about, you know, the possibly that the Sunset Center North Lot will be used. Is there a way that maybe you could just hold off a little? Like can we wait a few months? So I don't know exactly when the Aha! Group will come and everything with the state, you know, if they approve our changes to our housing element. But just so that we don't start on anything that we might not be able to.
PG&E is aware of that? We're slow-rolling it with them, right? We have filed an application for this program, so the application is active. And they've actually provided us a temporary design already. So, yeah, they're aware that we don't have this project completely funded and that we're working towards that. But there is no commitment at this point. And the engineering support is on, again, a TNM-type of contract. So we would not instruct them to move forward into construction documents at this site till we have that all resolved.
Okay, thanks, Javier.
Jeff? I guess the question really is more global than that because I was going to ask the exact opposite question. Like Vista Lobos is an expensive piece of property with an ocean view. Do we really want to build a gas station there? And there is already a gas station next door, which could be a site for this, right? I don't know if they want to get in the electric car charging business. But I guess there's a global view of at least two of us. Like, should we have a conversation about where this should go before we spend money on it? But I like the idea of spending money on it and getting it done because we're a tourist destination and a place to charge a car. And the circuit breakers are blowing out on the ones at Sunset Center and, you know.
So we're having that issue at Vista Lobos with the panel just not being adequate anymore. So the question was posed to PG&E. It's 100 amp service that we currently have. So what PG&E is going to do is they're going to upgrade the transformer that's under the stairs there at Vista Lobos, provide us 200 amp service at our building. So we're going to upgrade the panel to be able to handle that. In addition to that, there's enough residual power to power up additional chargers on the commercial site.
With a 200 amp?
No, it'll be a 400 amp service. So the 200 amp at Vista Lobos.
The panel's going from, the transformer's going from 100 to 200 or 400?
400.
It's hard to believe it works at all right now. So I guess we have to just have a leap of faith to approve this, that we need to have electric charging stations and someday we may have to move them, do something with them.
Well, and the benefit to this is that this infrastructure cost is being covered by PG&E, right? We are pursuing reimbursement for the actual chargers. So it's, most of these, most of these grants for chargers, there's a ton out there, but they work on the reimbursement phase. We have to actually go into construction and then they'll reimburse us on that.
All right, so that's, we've asked our questions, I think. Anybody else? Public comment? Donna?
Hi, my name is Donna Jett and I live in Carmel. My question is, how many superchargers do we have now? Well, that's criminal because my friends that drive their Teslas from the Bay Area, you know where they go? They go to Del Monte Shopping Center. And they shop while they're charging their car. If the fast one is busy, then they have to go to the slow one. And that's where they all go. I don't, and as you know, two of my children have Teslas. And as you know, it tells you where the charging station is. You don't have to look for it. It tells you and what's there. So you know they're skipping the ones that don't have the fast chargers. And I think the question is, I don't know how much money that they generate, but anything is good. My second question is, if there is a power outage, will these, is there a generator that will be able, people be able to power their car if they have to leave town or evacuate? Is there a backup system for these chargers? I'm just curious. I wasn't going to talk on this, but those are a couple of, because I'm thinking about buying one. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Any other public comments from the, anybody online?
No one on Zoom.
All right, we'll bring it back. Anybody want to make a comment or have a discussion about this?
I can answer. So there's no battery packs associated with these. So for Ms. Jett, if the power's out, then the chargers don't work. There's no solar proposed in this project yet either.
This is a basic, a basic installation of chargers.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess, you know, to your question earlier, like, I think it might not be a bad idea to have the discussion of like, just where's the best place to put these? I mean, I think Donna raises a great point is like, people come down here and they're coming from the Bay Area, they've got their electric vehicle and, you know, this is the future. We're going to need a place for folks to charge their cars. And where's the best place to do that in town?
Well, and/or they check a box saying, let's go to Carmel or let's go to someplace that has chargers. I mean, it is becoming an issue.
Yeah.
And it's a great question.
I mean, I'm actually looking at Alessandra because, you know, I think you care about the aesthetics of the town, you know, and are tuned to that. I mean, do you have any sense of where you would put these things? I don't mean to put you on the spot, I was curious.
I've actually never thought about it. But it is definitely, as all of you have said, something that we need to start thinking about and something that is part of our future. I just, I don't know. I just, I, I don't know, maybe we just need to kind of think of other locations. I mean, and this is the other thing of why, in a way, it's good to have a parking lot, because that's where people are going to assume you can find one of these. So, I mean, right now, these are the two parking lots that we have, that, you know, people would, would use. I mean, the only other place that just off the top of my head came, is at the Park Branch Library. Perhaps you could put a couple there, in the parking lot?
Yeah, I think, you know, I seem to remember we had this discussion in the Climate Committee a couple of years ago, and I think one, one part of this answer is to install chargers at hotels. These chargers that are going in, these are hours and hours and hours chargers, they're like, level-two chargers. They're not level-three chargers, which is what you find at, like, the Tesla gas station or other, or other gas stations you find at Costco when you're on the highway and you need to find something. And, you know, my impression is that level-three chargers are, the infrastructure to install those things is really significant. So we're not, you know, we're not going to end up with a level-three, a level-three charger facility in town without a significant capital investment, and that seems like that's not going to happen. So I think the alternative, you know, it's kind of telling, you, we made the remarks about, about parking lots, and we have lots of parking lots in town, and they're all at hotels. And I think that that's where, you know, I know Cary at some point was installed, you know, I think Cary installed a, a charging, a charging facility at Hofstra's house, and I think that's the, I think that's a good part of the future. But for now, I think we should move forward. I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with this. Yeah, and I think, you know, yeah, I think that staff, you know, I think that when Javier was talking about sort of slow-rolling it, I have faith that we'll slow-roll it a little bit, and we'll see. Yeah, I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-022, authorizing the city administrator to execute Amendment Number One to the PSA with Advanced Design Consultants for electric panel upgrades and electric vehicle charging-related projects from not to exceed fee of $58,020.
Second?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmal?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're on to number four, Resolution 2025-025.
Adopting policy, 2025-01, social media policy establishing guidelines and procedures for the city's participation in social media and authorizing the city administrator to administer the city's social media program. Emily, hi, how are you?
Good, good.
Take it away.
I think I was a little short of the other speakers. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Emily Gurey, I'm the administrative analyst for the Administration Department, and I'm here today to recommend adoption of Resolution 2025-025 for the adoption of the city's social media policy. This policy establishes the guidelines and procedures for the city's participation in social media and authorizes the city administrator to develop and administer this city's social media plan. So, how did we get here? This had been on the previous council's priorities list, and the, the council priority pillars are themes that were adopted in 2020 by resolution of that city council, and that was community engagement, and this had been on the priorities list matrix that, that we all saw, you know, for a couple of years. So now, we're taking advantage, we have the opportunity and a little bit more staff capacity to take this on. It's a big undertaking to have social media for our city. It's, it's, it's complicated, it takes, you know, training and knowledge, and we're right, we're ready, and we're, we're hoping we're, we're going to take this on. So, this would also translate into the proposed pillars or themes that were identified and discussed at the last City Council Priorities Meeting, and that would fall under effective, reliable, responsive government. So, using social media as a tool for communication, this enhances communication, engagement, transparency with the community. It, it allows staff in the city to reach a, a wider reach than traditional communication methods, and it allows staff to provide real-time updates on city news, events, extended road closures, for example, when storms come, and weather alerts. And this also serves as a resource for the community to have, to use as a tool to get valuable information straight from a trusted source, straight from the city, straight from the city staff. So is this an effective tool for, for this city, for Carmel-by-the-C? Part of the reason this has come up is because we had quite a bit of community members make comments and, and ask about social media in the last couple of City Council Priorities meetings, special meetings that we had at Carpenter Hall, you know, asking if the city would consider it, what that undertaking would look like, and we've certainly listened, and, you know, slowly prepared for, did research on it, and that's, that's what brought us here. And this provides the city staff with an opportunity to augment communication with the community, and it's, it's a great tool to meet people where they are, which is a big principle in community engagement. You know, folks now are on their phone, I know we send out constant contacts when we need to send something about a meeting, an emergency. You know, if somebody didn't have time to check their email, maybe they're scrolling social media, and they see a city alert, and they can go back to the city website and see what's going on. So here we have social media by the numbers, staff researched this, so YouTube is the most widely-used online platform, about eight in 10 adults in the US reported using it. The city does have YouTube, right now, we're on YouTube. And Facebook is also a dominant social media platform, 68% of adults in the US have reported using the platform. This is all from the Pew Research Center, if anybody is interested. About half of US adults have used Instagram, it's about 47% reported using the platform, and you can see from the graphs, you know, certainly the most popular YouTube, Facebook, and Instagram. And so, for the city of Carmel-by-the-C, in the 2020 census data, there were 3,220 residents with a median age of 68.9. So, if you see the, then, the social media platforms that the city is, is targeting or planning to implement, or Facebook, Instagram, we already have YouTube, and if you look at the graph from the census data, you see the, the purple line, if you look above, we're looking to capture quite a bit of the population, if they are online, if they're on Instagram. Again, it's just another tool to be able to deliver the city's messaging. So this brings us to the social media policy that staff has developed. This policy was developed through collaborative work across departments. This included the Administration Department, the city attorney, the city clerk, input from library, and Community Activities Director Ashley Wright, Joel Stake, our IT manager, our Police Department as well. So this is really big, a big endeavor, and we used our collective knowledge and experience and networks to, to find the best answers and the best principles for a sound social media policy for the city. So this policy establishes the guidelines for the city's use of social media, content guidelines. The city's official website remains the primary internet source, and that's clearly stated here, that will always be the city's main internet presence. And it outlines a process to create a social media account, so if a department wishes to open their own account, there's a process for that, there's a form for that, it requires authorization from the city administrator for that account to be created. In addition, it also covers legal compliance and restrictions, Brown Act compliance, Public Records Act, and content restrictions. Here we have a mock-up of Instagram, so you see the main, what we consider the main city page, which is the city of Carmel-by-the-C. We do have one post, that was for the City Council Priorities Meeting, and we have a mock-up of the Carmel Police, Carmel-by-the-C Police Department, who is eager and ready to also start their social media presence. Here we have some templates that staff has created, that we anticipate using, you know, in the next, you know, couple of years, or winter storms and whatnot. So, this is also clearly catered, we're catering to, our residents, to our community. This isn't, you know, an advertisement page, this isn't called to tourists, this is to inform our community members of what's going on in the city, and providing a notice of meetings, not official notice, notice, just so you know, and click back to the city website to look at our agenda. So these would be sent out, again, you know, as staff time allows and, you know, permitting, these would get sent out, and usually, these are posted as a, sort of like, a call to attention, and underneath you have the explanation of what the severe weather warning is, of what the winter storm update is, and it will always link back again to the city website. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Go ahead. I had a quick question. The, the policy alludes to, or seems to envision different accounts for different departments, and obviously you just had the Police Department up there. Is it just a main account and the Police Department? Like, how many departments are you envisioning?
This is, I, this is a, the way we're planning out the program is not going to be, you know, prescriptive to any department, and, you know, if they don't, if any particular department doesn't identify or feel that they have the staff capacity to take on social media account for their department, it's, again, they certainly don't have to. It'll be more of a asking for authorization, so if a department head feels like this is something that furthers the goals of their department, they can go ahead, take that form, fill it out, and that is actually one of the questions on that form, of how does this align, or how will this enhance the goal, your ability to reach your goals for your department? So as of now, it is the main account that we're considering, the Police Department account, and the Library and Community Activities account.
Alessandra?
I think I'll save it just for the comments. I don't think you have a question.
Jeff?
I'll save my question for the comments.
Okay. Can I open it up to public comment?
Mayor, city council members, the County of Santa Cruz put together something called Nextdoor, and it was pushed on the people, it's kind of like a neighborhood watch. It collects information, it's done by Greystone, I believe is the name of it. Greystone is funded by Incutel, the Mossad, and the CIA collect the information you have. I would not dare give an unelected person like the administrator and the city attorney to have control over that. People, there's somebody in, in the County of Santa Cruz that's receiving money for this collection of information, so it's not transparent. I would consider that, that the elected people here select whoever, or make a subcommittee, or you do the selection, rather than people that haven't been voted for. So, that, that would be my encouragement.
Thank you.
Hi, I didn't hear anybody address, are you going to open up comments on YouTube?
We are.
You are? Okay.
We don't open comments on YouTube, we open comments on, on Zoom.
I mean, on your YouTube channel, because they're closed now, you can't make a comment on your YouTube videos.
We never could, it's, it's Zoom, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
That's why I'm asking, are you going to?
You have to get on, you have to get on the link for Zoom to make a public comment.
No, I mean, when your videos get uploaded to YouTube, you cannot make a comment under the video. That's what I'm asking, are you going to open up those comments?
I don't know. Okay, come on up. Well, is that your comment?
My suggestion, excuse me, Mayor, my suggestion is you wait for all the public comments and then address them.
Okay, that's a question. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Rebecca Kumar, I'm a new resident of Carmel since last year. I worked at Facebook and Instagram for about seven years, from 2015 to 2021, so just wanted to comment that if there's any needed help with, part of my job was helping people start pages and build audiences and figure out all that stuff, so just wanted to put that out there, that I'm available for that. And also just want to make sure that with the way that the algorithm is changing right now, that a newsletter is not actually the way to go, as opposed to creating these social media accounts, just for efficiency, and I can also talk with you more about that later. So, that's all.
Thank you. Donna, come on up.
Thank you. I believe Monterey has social media, I think it's necessary, and I trust our city administrator to administrate it, and I believe we have enough people that know about it, and I like that I can go to YouTube and Zoom, and I like the sandbags. People are asking me all the time, where do I get sandbags? And I like that you will have that on Instagram and on YouTube, or any other platform that you choose. Some, or some simple questions can be answered, I believe, and advertised, and I, I believe it's like anything else, there are, there are methods to protect it. And I, and like you said, I watch Zoom with the city, and you, it doesn't mean it's a public comment, you have to raise your hand and be called on. So, I heartily endorse it, and I think it's a, a good addition to the city, that we need to keep moving forward. It's the future that we have to plan for. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's, Donna says, I'm all over it. Yeah, Nancy, too, me. I manage two pages on Facebook that are tied to Carmel-by-the-C. And one is the Carmel Residents Association Facebook page, and we have 25 members, 2,500 members. The Carmel-by-the-C Be Neighborly, it has 2,900 followers on those, and I'm, watch it really carefully for the posts that happen, because it is an open forum, and I remove things that are out of context or don't fit with the rules that we have, and I constantly post a lot about what happens in this venue and, and throughout the city, and look forward to continue to do that, and link to whatever the city also does, as I post, you know, relative to what you have on your website, and what happens in the Friday Letter, and et cetera, et cetera. So, I think it's a good partnership, and I'm committed to keeping it a healthy, positive discussion environment and information source for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody online?
There's no one with their hands raised.
All right, we'll bring it back. Jeff, you had a discussion point.
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment and then a question. So... So I've been, you know, pretty much of an advocate for this for years, and I'm excited that we're sort of dipping our, dipping our toes in. But when I read Section P of the, excuse me, Section P of the policy, it starts by saying, "City's social media site shall be managed consistent with the Brown Act," and then there's a paragraph that talks about, "Members of the city council shall not respond to, react, share, repost, or otherwise participate in any published postings, yada, yada, yada." And I, you know, this kind of caused, caused me to do a little bit of a double-tape, because part of the strength of social media is when things get reposted. You know, I see something on the city, the city, the city's Instagram page, and I hit like, and that makes the algorithm more likely to show it to people that follow me, or people that follow the city, you know, what, posts that get liked, posts that get, the posts that get liked are more likely to be seen by other people. And so my action as a city council member of liking these posts, caused the posts to be more visible. And so I had a conversation with the city attorney about this, and, and asked him sort of where this came from, and would you, and, and there's, I have some more comments after, after Brian answers, after Brian answers that, because could you talk about sort of the genesis of that, of Section P a little bit?
Yes, I can do that. I believe the language that you're seeing there is coming from the Brown Act, Section 549, 52.2, Section A3. And what it discusses is, and perhaps I should just read it, because I think it's worth the time. It says that Paragraph One shall not be construed as preventing a member of the legislative body from engaging in separate conversations or communications on an internet-based social media platform to answer questions, provide information to the public, or to solicit information from the public regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, provided that a majority of the members... of the legislative body, provided that a majority of the members of the legislative body do not use the internet-based social media platform to discuss among themselves business of a specific nature that is not within, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. And then the final sentence, "A member of the legislative body shall not respond directly to any communication on an internet-based social media platform regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body that is made, posted, or shared by any other member of the legislative body." So there is a rule that, and it's contained elsewhere in this code section, that council members should not be using electronic means, emails, or social media to be basically conducting a meeting outside of a public meeting. And that's the purpose of that section that I just read. And I believe that that is the basis for that Section P that you see in your packet.
So my response to sort of, so when I had this conversation with Brian, you know, my response is that it was sort of two-pronged. The first is that Section P states, as I read before, "Members of the city council," I'm using us, "shall not respond to or use the site of any form of electronic communication, respond to anything that's posted by the city." And that's more restrictive than the code that is laid out, more restrictive than the language in the Brown Act. So the Brown Act prohibits me, for example, from liking or reposting or commenting on some comment or post or tweet or picture that, like you, Dale, might post on Instagram. That's what the Brown Act says. This policy prohibits me from doing those things, prohibits me as a council member from doing those things and amplifying, you know, amplifying the posts of the city based on city websites. And that's really different. And those are different. And I feel like it's sort of my job to sort of amplify the message that, you know, it's all of our jobs to sort of amplify the message and toe the sort of the staff line, hey, you know, the farmer's market is canceled today because of rain. Like, I should be able to repost that. And to, you know, to the second, the second contention was that, you know, when I was talking with Brian, you know, there was some notion that, we had a conversation, so as opposed to the farmer's market being canceled comment, we had a discussion about, hey, we're considering opening up the farmer's markets on Saturday as well, you know, something that, something that we, we in fact considered, you know, six months ago. And could my reaction to that post be considered, you know, on the city, be considered an endorsement of sort of that policy direction? And my preference is to sort of leave the enforcement of the Brown Act as it relates to us, to the state. Like, leave the enforcement of the Brown Act to the people that enforce the Brown Act and not have the city, not have the city dictate what I can or can't do with relation to posts that are related to, posts that are related to, posts that are put out by the city that relate to the city's business. And I think, you know, my sort of solution, my sort of suggested solution to admittedly my quandary here is to replace this paragraph with a, with some, some sort of statement, some sort of sentence that, "Members of the city council, commissions, and boards shall be cognizant of the restrictions placed on them by the Brown Act," and sort of leave it at that. And sort of not really tie my hands and my feet when it comes to amplifying the message that's sort of produced by staff. So that's my, that's my ask here with regards to this policy.
If three of you were talking about the steps, that would be a violation of the Brown Act. Three out of five is a majority. You're destroying the Brown Act by making an illegal.
We're not, we're not open for public comment. We're not open now. Alessandra?
Thank you, Mayor. My big concern, just when I read the agenda packet, was that none of what we received in this presentation was in there. So I didn't understand most of what we were doing this for. There were no details, and I had a lot of questions. I mean, I had like a page of questions, and now most of these questions are answered because of this presentation. So that would be something about the process that we need to do a better job in informing the public and the council through the agenda packet of what this is actually all about. So not even going to bring up the stuff that has been answered, but one thing that I thought was really important is, as I envisioned this when we had this during all the strategic priorities meetings, is that this was a way of conveying breaking news or important information that the public needed to know, and it certainly didn't want it to be something more like for tourism or marketing or any kind of PR like that. So I think hopefully that's the direction that this is headed in. But I do share Jeff's concerns. So maybe we can rework that one paragraph. It just seemed nine pages of legal documents where this seemed a bit excessive. So that's my concern. The rest of it, like I said, my questions have been answered.
So what you're saying is you like the concept, you would like to adjust the, and Jeff would too, do some more thinking about how the council, commissions interact with the Instagram posts?
Well, I think the point is, we want to spread information. If there is an emergency or a road that is closed or some, you know, something that people need to know, we as council members would want to spread that as much as possible. And so to think that we were violating the Brown Act in doing so seems counterproductive, the whole idea of the policy. So that's, I do share your concerns with that aspect of it.
Do you have any other ones on your list?
That's mostly it.
Okay. Hans?
Yeah, I actually thought it was a pretty well-done policy. So, you know, nice job. I do wonder about having like multiple departments having their own handles and accounts. And I just wonder if it'd be cleaner if it was just kind of a single account. But, but, you know, those are kind of minor points. I think Jeff raises actually a really great point. The only question I have is, you know, your solve on it is to sort of say, you know, I think having some specificity, at least for council members, would be helpful going forward, you know, as trainings are produced, folks might refer back to this policy. And when I read, when I, when I listened to the city attorney read the actual language from the Brown Act, it actually, I think it's pretty clear about what's allowed. And it feels to me like it would be totally fine to repost, you know, breaking news about an emergency situation, et cetera. And as long as we're not interacting substantively about key questions relating to the city. My preference would be if there's some way to have some level of specificity, but don't make it more restrictive than what the state's doing, I definitely want to go in that direction. So.
Yeah. In the case of what gets you into trouble, because we attended, I don't know, you might not have been there because you had some meetings, but this class in Sacramento got into this a lot. And, you know, I would hope the city wouldn't be posting something that could get us in trouble to start with, right? Because they would have to be taking an opinion about what they want to happen at a council meeting, for instance. But it's the likes that can get you in trouble, too. Because if Jeff likes it, and then I like it, and then you like it, we just broke the Brown Act. So the likes can get you in trouble. You can't have more than two, and we don't know that that's not going to happen. So do you have any comments?
I mean, my concern about using social media in all aspects is that social implies it's conversation. When we can't have a conversation using social media, we can communicate. And so I think we, I mean, Jeff, I hear you. I think it's fine that, you know, that elected officials need to be cognizant of the Brown Act is a good start, and let's try that. But then we really need to understand what that means. And, you know, I, for me, I'll repost something and just send it on without comment and would not, if I was on Jeff's, you know, chain, I wouldn't do a thing. Because I think you're starting to weigh into a conversation that's inappropriate. But we can handle that. We'd handle that every day in all of our conversations.
It makes sense. So Jeff, do you want to make a motion as to if, it sounds like we're all in general agreement with that concept? Okay.
I would just, you know, I had, I did have this conversation with Brian, and this is the, just to be clear, this is sort of the, starts with the second sentence of Section P and ends with, "Social media pages that address city business." And the last part of Section Bullet Point P is, "City's social media sites are subject to the California Public Records Act request." So it's the Brown Act section of Section P. And my, my sort of thinking is that we should just send this back, just see this next month on the consent agenda with a revised, you know, with sort of a revised section, with a revised paragraph of Section B that just says something like, you know, "City council members, commissioners, and boards and commission members shall be cognizant of the Brown Act," you know, shall be cognizant of the Brown Act, maybe with another sentence sort of crafted by Brian. You know, the interesting thing is that the section that Brian read, the last sentence, "A member of the legislative body shall not respond directly to something that I say," is not at all applicable here because I'm not saying these things. The city is saying these things. So I would just leave it up to the attorney to craft a sentence and then, you know, take that sentence out, craft another sentence, and just bring it back on consent next month.
I have a question. How does the council feel about what Mr. Delves said, which was, it's okay to resend or repost, but prohibit yourselves from commenting?
May I say something in response to that? I think that's probably something that I should include in the research to address that, to make sure that's not an issue.
Yeah, I think, you know, this sort of, again, sort of touches on what Brian and I were talking about, like you, the farmer's market example, like, the farmer's market's closed on Thursday, and me saying something like, everybody be safe out there. Am I allowed to do that? Like, I don't, like, I don't know. You know, I don't, like, my fear is that the restrictions that you would put in the policy to, you know, in fact, these restrictions are really sort of protecting me. They're not protecting the city because I'm the person that's violating the Brown Act. If anybody's violating the Brown Act by making that post, it's me. And what I would posit is that perhaps the city could let the five of us be adults and be a little bit less concerned about whether we're violating the Brown Act and leave it up to us, that we've taken our AB 1234 training. And we can sort of apply that in real life to be careful. That's my, you know, that's my, you know, sort of take on it.
If I could just add, another option would be if you had a doubt about it, you can consult with your city attorney.
Why not? All right. So the question is, can we go ahead and vote on this with direction to modify P to loosen it up a little bit?
You can just direct us.
My preference would be we bring it back. How I'd like them to see the language.
That's what I meant, sir. Direct us to bring it back with the modifications that you've discussed.
So Emily, looks like you'll have to wait a little bit. And we're going to take a vote, I guess, first. Do we have to, this is just recommendation, not a vote? There was a resolution.
This was, this was set up, but again, you don't, I mean, councillor, would you like to see them vote on the direction to bring it back next month with the modifications to Section P?
Yeah, I think we should probably just, it'd be a motion to direct staff to make revisions to the policy and return to the next council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Second? I'll second it. Roll call.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you, Jeff, for that insight. Appreciate that. All right, so we're moving on to number five, and I'm going to recommend, due to the timing, and we've got some other, three other things to do in closed session, and I think we're going to have some comments here that we will table that, number five, continue it till the next meeting. It's not urgent, and it'll be just as pertinent next month as it is today. Do you want to take a vote? Roll call for that?
You don't need to do that.
All right, we're good. All right, so with that, we're going to take public comments. Do I need to read all these, Brian?
Yeah, typically, I would read them. And then after I've read the closed session items, you can ask the public for comment. And then after the public has commented, you can adjourn to closed session. It's my understanding that the third item, C, would probably be the first one covered in the closed session.
Okay.
That'd be my suggestion as well, Mayor. We take the third one first, so we can release some of the colleagues.
So to identify the closed session items, the first closed session item is a public employee performance evaluation. That's authorized by Government Code Section 54957. The title is City Administrator. The second item is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The title is City Attorney. The third item is Conference of Labor Negotiators. That's authorized by Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency-designated representatives are listed in the agenda. The employee organization is the Carmel Fire Ambulance Association. And now, Mayor, would be the time to ask for public comment on all, on any or all of those items.
Okay, we'd like public comment on all those items, please. Three minutes.
Yeah, this is on, my name is still James Ian Whitman. I want to comment on number two and number three, but I kind of want to lead with that on the comments that I didn't make during public comments on number three and four on the general business. So what to say? You know, it just, the city manager and city attorney were not elected individuals, but they seem to have a lot of control. I'm not sure how much the city attorney makes, but the city manager, who's an unelected, internationally-controlled official, makes almost 10 times as much as the city council members. It's enough on number three. The resolution adopting a policy about the social media? That's really a challenging one. And I'm going to, it's just really a challenging one. Now, as far as commenting on number, yeah, I'm going to stay on topic and not make some other decisions. So any incorporated city or county is controlled by county administrators or city administrators, and the city council members have to follow them like puppets, you know? And it's really quite challenging. You know, I can't speak a whole lot directly about what happened in the past five years in Carmel, although I really could. I think it's kind of embarrassing. But all that's in the past, you know, virtually nothing that anyone says is going to make any difference because things are controlled. You know, communism was brought to Russia and China. Which time do I have? Minute 12. Beginning of the 20th century, you know, Bush Senior brought technocracy to China in 1972. And at that same time, when our steel mills were being, were kind of outdated and being destroyed, new state-of-the-art equipment is being built. And now we have a great deal of manufacturing that's not happening in the United States, and the empire is collapsing. So I just think it's kind of sad and unfortunate that the people who were elected to represent the people in the city don't actually, can't actually speak their minds, and that they're controlled by some international puppets. You know? I say that really strongly. I'm not really trying to be nice. I mean, I certainly would run for office in the United States, and it would be as a pre-1783 constitutional republic county sheriff. At that time, a sheriff could arrest a sitting president. So I'm hoping to bring that back. So that's enough for now in brevity. Thanks.
All right. Good evening. We've got three more.
Gary Arnold. The social media is very dangerous, and of course, none of you can really talk to each other about it. And maybe the attorney could tell me, if he's talking and coordinating the same message with three different elected council people, does that violate the Brown Act by your talking them independently or together? If you talk to them together, that would be a violation, isn't it correct?
We're just taking comments.
If you're talking to three or more city council people?
We're just taking comments right now.
I'm sorry.
Just finish your comment.
Okay. That was it. I was just asking the attorney. And really, it suggests that the city council, by adopting, in fact, the lady, two ladies came up here, a lady in black talked about controlling the media and that she actually censors the media, so nothing bad. And so... And so I don't know who you're going to put in charge of this censorship. I would suggest you select the Chamber of Commerce or some department that deals with emergencies like, like police, or storm, or weather, or whatever. But don't get caught up in this, please.
Thank you. Hi, Mike.
Mayor Byrne, council members.
I'm doing a personnel evaluation of City Administrator Rarick. Last October 5th, at the Underground Utilities Rule 28 Project Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, I called out City Administrator Rarick's negligence in not forming a Rule 28 Underground District in 2021. Mr. Rarick's negligence resulted in Carmel forfeiting over $300,000 of PG&E Undergrounding credits. Took Mr. Rarick three years to finally establish the Carmel Underground Utility District. Mayor Byrne, in the recent Special City Council Station Meeting, you asked Chief Tomasi twice, "How did a $150,000 repair end up as a $30 million to $40 million repair?" As the city's chief operating officer, that question belonged to Mr. Rarick. It was clever of Mr. Rarick to get the spotlight off of himself by having Chief Tomasi take the heat for the deplorable working conditions that our police officers have to work in. The maintenance and repair of our police station is a job of the city administrator, not the chief of police. Starting in 2017, these deplorable working conditions our police officers are forced to work in are the result of Mr. Rarick not doing his job. In my view, for eight years, from 2017 to 2024, Mr. Rarick was practicing his version of defunding the police. Then there was the debacle of Mr. Rarick's hiring of Police Chief Alan Ward. Mr. Rarick vetted, interviewed, and recommended Chief Ward be hired as our new police chief. After Ward was hired, he worked for six weeks and then was put on leave. Ward never returned to the job, and we never got an explanation for what happened. Next, Mr. Rarick enabled and oversaw the handover of our city-owned parking lots to the state of California for affordable housing. This was especially egregious because we already had a shortage of parking. And on top of that, Mr. Rarick neglected to inform us and the council of the passage of AB 413, the Daylighting Law, which removed much-needed parking in our downtown. AB 413 and its impact on our downtown was never discussed in the Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Committee Meetings. His radio silence on AB 413 issue prevented the Planning Commission from making a fully informed decision. While on duty, picking up litter in front of Craig Rose's gallery at a time when there was a contentious controversy about a wall, Mr. Rarick, accompanied by then Planning Commissioner, Planning Director Swanson, got into an argument that became a physical altercation with Craig Rose. Mr. Rarick, while on duty as city administrator in public, allowed himself to be so out of control, he gets into a fight with one of our business owners. For sure, I thought Mr. Rarick would be fired the next day for this outrageous behavior, and yet, here he sits. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor and council members do today what should have been done then and show Mr. Rarick the door and thank him for his service. Mayor Byrne, you have an ambitious work agenda for Carmel, and you'll need a fully engaged, hardworking city administrator to accomplish it. City council, as you adjourned to closed session, according to the Carmel Municipal Code, we need four of you to vote yes to terminate Mr. Rarick. I'd prefer a unanimous vote to part ways with Mr. Rarick. Thank you.
All right, next.
Hi there. My name is Teresa McCollough. And contrary to what you guys think I might be saying today, I thoroughly encourage you to continue on Chip and Brian's employment. I think they've been doing a great job. And I'm going to go into some of the reasons for why I have observed that they've been honorable men for the past five years. So it would start with a vlog that Chip did with the mayor at the time on June 17th, where he encouraged people to attend this, what he called a celebration, a social gathering, individuals coming together organized under that pesky little First Amendment, the right to gather. We will be present and active participants. And yet, for some reason, this is what he decided to do to the people two weeks later. What happened? Did we amend the Constitution, Chip? Or do you think that you can grant rights and take them away? So this successfully terrorized the people. It terrorized me, the violence and humiliation that I had to undergo because of what Chip Rarick decided to do with his police department. Then let's talk about the agenda from September 2020, which I'm going to read off of. "No person shall have on the beach any of the following coolers or containers for storage of food, umbrellas, shade structures, or tents, beach equipment. No person shall engage in the following activities at the beach, group activities, sports, sitting, lounging, picnics, or sunbathing, or you would be punished according to 2.64100, which had to do with a $1,000 fine, six months in an orange jumpsuit in the jail with a bunch of psychopaths and criminals." And here is Chip Rarick's signature for sunbathing. "How about the 13 professional conduct complaints that I submitted to Rarick and his staff over the course of 18 months, complaining about the harm that I had undergone for what his police department did to me for standing on the beach? You want to guess how many times he responded to those complaints? Thirteen? Zero." That violates Penal Code 832.7 F1. I was to be apprised of the disposition of the complaint within 30 days, and I never heard back from Chip Rarick. Is that it? That's my time? Three minutes?
You can take, if that was three minutes, go ahead.
Wow.
Summarize and close.
That I want to keep this metastasizing around the country. Let the big channels keep calling in, keep watching. I have one here tonight. And I just, I encourage you, make this worse. Vote to keep him on. He deserves it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments here? Anybody online? Donna?
Hi, my name's Donna. Gentlemen out there is filming this, he just called me a bootlicker. And I thought that was interesting. Not very creative, but interesting. Because I support everyone up here who was not elected and our police chief. And the Carmel Foundation, the CEO over there said, "Nobody liked the decisions I made during the pandemic, nobody." But somebody has to make the hard decisions. And if people have a problem staying off the beach a few days, just a few days or two weeks later, they, they have a problem. And I support all of you guys up here. And it's just heartening to have people attack you. People say, "What do you do?" I go, "I'm a cheerleader for the city, warts and all." And so all of your decisions are made for the good of everybody, not just somebody that has to go to the beach a certain day of the year. So I congratulate you and support you. And I wish the people who complained lived here so they could vote for you. They'd be way ahead of the game. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Would you like to approach?
You may.
Hello, council members? Hope you don't mind me documenting for transparency purposes. Like to make a comment regarding, yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Gave me the thumbs up.
I just want to make a comment regarding the lady behind me when I called her a bootlicker. I actually didn't engage in any conversation with her. She was kind of interrupting my video session when I was documenting you guys. She started getting upset that the other lady was concerned about what happened in 2020 of being attacked and arrested and having her rights stripped of her for walking on a public beach. She also made a comment that I don't pay taxes here. Well, every time I shop here, every time I go to a restaurant here, every time I put gas in my vehicle, I pay taxes. And I want to make something very, very clear. That beach doesn't belong to the city of Carmel. It belongs to the people of the United States of America. If you guys want to close the beach down, go move to North Korea, go move to Russia, go move to China, go somewhere where we don't have rights. That beach belongs to the people, and that's it. It's that simple. As far as going to the Brown Act, seems like you're scared of people calling you out for transparency purposes regarding public pages. You are allowed to have a, you can go onto the Seaside Police Department, you can go onto Hollister PD, you can go onto any city, and they're going to have multiple social media platforms. What you can't do is you can't take sides. You can't say, "Well, someone made a comment you don't like, so I'm going to delete it." That's a public forum. That's a forum, that's a way for us to have meetings and address our grievances. Now, as long as we're keeping it peaceful, we're not threatening people, we're not saying anything hateful, there's nothing wrong with having a page. So I don't know what you're scared of. Is there a reason why you're scared to have social media? It's a great thing, just like some of the other people mentioned. When there's an emergency, when there's a road closure, when there's a storm, you guys can use that as a great tool. More people watch so, social media than they do Channel 8 on there. And that's all I want to say, guys. And let's keep our beaches open for the people. If you guys don't like having freedom here, turn in your, you know, your position. I guarantee, if I were to add up all your salaries here, we're well over a million dollars here annually. So if you don't like your job and you don't want to work for the people, whether we live here or not, you don't belong here. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there aren't any other.
There's two hands raised.
Some hands went up, okay.
Catherine, go ahead.
Hello, good, good evening, everyone. And I just want to thank the city council for your service. This is not an easy job. I think by any standard, to evaluate any city or special government employee is, do they follow the law? And we're not talking about laws that violate rights. We're talking about, do they follow the law and do they uphold the rights of the people? And those are very simple. There's a Declaration of Independence, and it's Amendment 1 through 10. And they were really called the Declaration of Prohibitions. That means you're not allowed to suppress speech. You're not allowed to search and seize. So when your special government employee, like Pyrick or Rarick, orders people to be criminalized for sunbathing, that is not helping anyone for the woman that came and spoke in the crowd. It's not protecting anyone. It's criminalizing the people that pay the taxes, that keep the city rolling. So why do you, why, is anybody who is doing those, creating those types of policies, why would they get anything but a negative review? You're, and, and what's a slap in the face to the people of Carmel is to, why is this whole process backward? He, Rarick should have never gotten a raise before he got an evaluation. If he was in the private sector, he would get a, a performance evaluation first. And it's, it's good it's coming up, it's great the people know, so we could step forward and talk to you about what he did wrong, or the fact that Pyrick sits there and sleeps through half the meetings. But the simple measurement stick is, is he following the law? And there is nothing that the city council can even delegate to him. He did not have the authority to close the beach. He committed a crime by criminalizing people and closing the beach. So he should have told the city council, "It's not within my authority to do that. It's not my job to do that." That would be, at minimum, the health officer of the county. So if we're looking at someone who is going to not expose the city to hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation expenses and make the city look terrible to the general public, he, then he, that's who you want on your staff. That's who the people of Carmel are electing the city council to make sure that they're not hiring someone that steps outside of his authority. He does not possess the authority to do what he did. And then Pyrick's over here destroying evidence and doing other things that, it's just not a good look. And it's not what the taxpayers of Carmel are getting for, they should be getting for their money. They should be getting somebody that isn't going to.
Thank you. Thank you, your three minutes is up. All right.
Karen Felito?
Karen Felito. Hi, Karen.
Karen, go ahead.
Yes, actually, I was here the whole time for the subject that got continued to next week. But I will make a comment on the evaluations. We went through very difficult times. So I was not on the council when the beach was closed. But I know that was not done lightly. That was done because we didn't know what was happening with a terrible pandemic. We were, the city was trying to keep the city as safe as possible. If mistakes were made, they were not made out of malice. I have worked with both Brian Pyrick and Chip Rarick for the last four years. They are both competent individuals, caring individuals, and they know what they are doing. Are they perfect? No one is perfect. I'm not perfect, none of us are. Evaluations are part of making people better employees. They're not punitive. They are to look at things that were done, examine them, and figure out ways to make things better. Our staff works very hard. It is not an easy job to be an administrator or a city attorney. And I urge you to be fair and make this a positive experience that has a great outcome of the city and all the employees being better for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
There's no more speakers.
All right, I think that wraps up this meeting. And we're going to now.